At 6:04, the April 16, 2024 study session. Roll call, please.
You are all here.
Just wanted to make sure for the record our names are present.
Present.
For the record, all members of council are here. Obviously, Mr. Mayor, this is a study session, so you will not be voting or conducting any business tonight. Purpose of tonight's meeting is to talk about what we've accomplished in the past and set some goals for the future and for you to get some updates from myself, from Lacy, and from the department heads regarding what we've accomplished in the past year and what we would like to accomplish in the next year and get some feedback from you and some guidance direction and your list as well. So we have a presentation tonight, and before I begin, a little history lesson for those of you who haven't been around like me since the earth cooled and there were baby dinosaurs in Hazel Park. Brief history. I took over as city manager after serving as assistant city manager and special projects coordinator and acting city clerk for over a year and a half. Took over in February of 2002 when Mike Webb and Andy LaCure along with Jack Lloyd hired me to be the city manager of Hazel Park on an interim basis, which was made permanent in May. At that time, it was a very contentious time, and it was a time in which we had found out that the city of Hazel Park was facing some grave financial difficulties. We brought in the auditors. There was evidence of mismanagement, and Dave Halasek sat here in this very room, and we had a Saturday study session, and he looked at the mayor and council, and he said, "You are broke." So the previous administration had just negotiated some very rich contracts that dramatically improved police and fire pensions for those serving in those departments and had made some unwise expenditures, such as the construction of an ice arena and the purchase of multiple homes in a neighborhood to relocate City Hall at a cost of well over a million-dollar loss.
Without contingency.
What's that?
Without a contingency.
With no contingency. So I inherited a city and nine houses and a money-losing ice arena, and the state of Michigan began almost immediately targeting our revenue-sharing dollars with then-Governor John Engler, the following year vetoing the entire revenue-sharing appropriation for the statutory side of revenue-sharing for the entire state. That veto was unanimously overridden by every member of the legislature in both houses. But we saved it that year, but the decline had begun. So we received employee concessions, and we were in pretty much a concessionary environment until 2006, when things came to a head and we had to take a look at our own independent pension system. We moved the pension system to the MERS system, which saved us over a million dollars that year in pension contributions, avoided litigation with our own pension board, which probably wasn't the most professional pension board on the planet Earth. And we approached our voters, and we passed a Headley override, which meant that we took our general operating millage, which was set by charter at 20 mills. It had fallen to almost 15 mills. The voters brought that back up to 20 mills, and we thought we had stabilized things. And we had a couple of years there where things were stable, but looming in the background was the subprime mortgage crisis and the subsequent collapse of property values. Our property values, our taxable value, and we'll talk a little bit about that later, but that's the number that we get, that we use to calculate how much money we get in property taxes. That fell by way more than 50%. At the same time, those property values were falling, and our property tax revenues were declining. The state of Michigan was in the process of eviscerating our statutory revenue-sharing dollars, and as you can see from the resolution that you passed last week, those dollars were cut by a million dollars. So we had to cope with this, and I'm proud to say that we were the only city that had a taxable value per capita in our neighborhood, and many were richer than us. All of them went under some type of state control. Hazel Park was the only city that was never under state control with a taxable value in our range. Every other one went. We never had a receiver. We never had an emergency financial manager. We never even had a minder. And how we did it was we made brutal cuts, and all of us who were employees at the time took pay cuts. One year, we took a 10% pay cut across the board. The next year, we took a 2.5% pay cut on top of that across the board. We did what we had to do. We passed PA 33, Public Safety Millage Assessment overwhelmingly in 2011, and within two years, property values had fallen to the point that even with that additional millage, we were collecting less money in revenue than we were before we passed the millage. So we needed to do something dramatically different, and in 2013, Steve Duchene, then the city manager of East Point, called me, and he said, "Ed, I can run my fire department on 14 mills, and you can run your fire department on 14 mills." And I said, "Steve, you had me at hello." We went over to the Olive Garden at 10 Mile and Grashit, and there on a napkin, eating spicy shrimp appetizers, we created SMORSA Consortium. That is a service-sharing agreement between the city of Hazel Park and the city of East Point to create a funding mechanism for both of our fire departments. We did that because we did not have the statutory authority to levy any mills without creating some new type of authority. The year prior, we were talking to the city of Warren about sharing fire services. That didn't work out, you know, the Warren being mayor, being the Warren mayor. But what we did, we did end up basically giving the bottom-third seniority of our fire department to Warren, which they hired, and then we replaced them with what I affectionately referred to as the Tier Z guys for zombies. Now, remember, things were tight there. It was an era where people were in need of jobs, not anything like we're in now, and we were able to pretty much keep our manpower filled with people who were looking for other permanent, better firefighting jobs, but they needed to be someplace to work as a firefighter, and it worked for us. It was certainly not a permanent situation, but it was something that allowed us to continue to maintain fire protection. In 2015, we passed SMORSA. The voters approved it overwhelmingly, 75% in favor, to approve that dedicated millage to fund fire services, which, by the way, still does not completely fund the fire department, but it does go a great deal towards funding it. So in 2015, we passed that. Ashley Capital moved to begin constructing buildings over in the Raceway. Maple Gray opened their doors, and we began a little bit of a mini renaissance. And here we sit now in a post-COVID environment where we're facing a new set of unique threats and challenges brought on by an inflationary environment and in an environment where it's a tight labor market as opposed to a rich labor market of job seekers needing a job. We are now struggling to hire. So that said, four of you in 2023 were given a list of goals and objectives. Andrea, you weren't there then, but I think I gave you guys all another copy of it a couple of weeks ago, and I want to report to you on how we did on those goals and objectives. So I could have...
Slide one.
Slide one. Okay. One of the first things we had are legislative problems. One thing that I will tell you is many of the solutions, I mean, many of the problems that we face in Hazel Park are created by people in Lansing. Legislators not really understanding the unintended consequences of their actions, and whether it's revenue sharing or bad pieces of legislation that we had in terms of the Raceway when we had that operating in our city. We have to pay attention to what's going on in Lansing, what's going on in Pontiac, and what's going on in Washington, D.C., and I like to think we're very effective at it. So our key legislative priorities are, first one, we need to influence the court reform process. I've spoken with you on that. There's a potential of significant loss for us if this isn't managed properly. This is ongoing. There's legislation going before the legislature even this week that can impact it. It is not, it is not the battle, but it is a pre-battle that I want to make sure that we are properly influencing. Headley and Prop A. People have talked about this. We talk about it frequently at our meetings. This interaction keeps revenues from the city of Hazel Park in a vice. Lacy will speak a little bit more about this, or I may take that slide. When we go on a little bit, we're looking at some changes to some of the enabling language for Proposal A, which will go a great deal in addressing some of our problems without completely removing the cap. No one is saying remove all of the caps from Headley and Prop A. What reform proponents like myself are advocating is make these changes so that cities have some flexibility to grow their revenues and keep pace with inflationary costs, because right now, we do not have that. Revenue-sharing increase and revenue-sharing stabilization fund. The city of Hazel Park, we have our own lobbyists, and I do travel to Lansing frequently to lobby. And one of the things that we helped the Michigan Municipal League lobby on was an increase, a modest increase in revenue-sharing, which does not mean an increase over what we used to get. It just means an increase over what we were getting recently. And they created the revenue-sharing trust fund. Well, now, we need to ensure that that trust fund is fully funded and functioning properly, and there's some more legislation coming down the pike that we'll talk about in future meetings and be passing a resolution on. And again, we're reforming the old Michigan Suburbs Alliance into the Detroit Area Metropolitan Alliance, and we're talking about actually doing a press conference and rally to make sure we can let the legislature know how important revenue-sharing is. Pension relief. This was huge. This was something we had to get. Now, frequently, you hear us tell you that we've used the marijuana money to cover increased costs for our pension, and Lacy has a slide that she'll show you during her presentation that shows you how dramatically these costs have gone up. It's not a choice paying this money. This is an obligation. It is the first bill that you have to pay as a city council, because if you do not pay it, the MERS system will file a lawsuit against the city, and the pension costs will be levied against every taxpayer in the city of Hazel Park. It's happened numerous times in other communities in the state of Michigan across the past few decades. So we lobbied, and we lobbied successfully. We went up there. I went up there with Lacy and Jeff Campbell, and we sat in some outstanding senators' offices. We met with Senator Chang. We met with Senator Roger Victory, who was an outstanding senator on the Republican side. We met with Ruth Johnson. We went after the votes that we knew we would need to get to make this bailout a reality, and it was successful. I have to give a ton of credit to Chris Hackbarth from the Michigan Municipal League. He's left the league and gone to DTE, but he was the primary architect of the strategy to get this passed, and I will always have much love for Chris Hackbarth for the work that he did and the league did to get this done. But we were right up there along with them and good partners. So we will continue to monitor legislation in Lansing because it's very important for us to do so. We punch way above our weight class, because I've been around for a little while, and I know a couple of people. So that's helpful, but it's critical. Never lose sight of the fact, if there's a future day when I am not standing here and I'm not sitting in that chair, you have to keep an eye on Lansing. The threats and also many of the solutions, they're not at the city council table, they're in Lansing. Economic development. First of all, you guys know this, but everyone at home may not, when they go to social media and they pop on the corkboard, and "When is the city of Hazel Park going to redevelop this property?" Well, we don't own private property in the city of Hazel Park. The best that we can do is facilitate economic development and make sure that we're creating conditions where you want to come and do business in the city of Hazel Park. The biggest problem that we've had are property owners and landlords who think they're sitting on gold mines, when in fact, they're sitting on a valuable piece of property, but it's not as valuable as they think that it is, and they're leaving it sit. So we do what we can to influence them, one way or another, to do something with their properties that will be much more valuable for them and for the city. So despite high interest rates discouraging development, residential housing values continue to grow at a rapid pace. We have a really nice chart that Lacy will show you. CVS update. Lacy, James, Amanda, and I, we met with some prospective buyers. They have not yet formalized a deal for both pieces of property, but we will release information about the nature of that development to the general public once it becomes a real thing. You all, the five of you on city council, know what that potential development could be, and our fingers are crossed. It looks positive at this point, but I don't want to get anybody's hopes up, and I don't release anything until I got a deal in my hand. And that will also encompass not just CVS, but all the way to the corner at Woodward Heights, the Sullivan Service, and the old Tulsa Gas Station. Landmark Church, that's been sold. They're still planning on doing mixed-use housing there. Apartment complexes, single-family attached, single-family detached, a very nice mix, which will add, I think, a nice range of housing options that are much needed here in the city of Hazel Park. Infill housing. We continue to have a very successful infill housing program. Developers are building. They want the vacant lots. They're selling here. We're doing very well. Again, you'll see how, what a nice job we've done with our business and residential development to increase our taxable value. And finally, Robertson Brothers, the condo project over there, just east of the St. Mary's Church, that went very well. The project is almost done, and they've sold very well. So some goals and objectives for Public Works, and I'm sure Tom will talk a little bit more about these things as well, but I'll hit on some very basics. Completion of Woodward Heights to Dequender. We want to finish the paving all the way to Dequender this year. We don't have quite enough county money to do it, but we're going to squeeze some city money, and let's get this done and finished. Would like to put a traffic light at either Chevelin and John R. or Maple Dale and John R. The business owner there was going to pony up the money for that. They've had a change in ownership structure there, so we're looking at some grant money. We think we've identified a grant that might help pay for that. The John R. Road Diet. You will all remember that we've been talking about the John R. Road Diet for four years, the I-75 project, and its late completion kind of derailed that for a while. Well, now, we think we're in a position to do this. Last year, our sole source provider was disqualified by the state, nothing to do with us. This year, there again, the sole source provider, and they were awarded the bid. They were the only bidder. It's a little higher than we expected, but we're going to accept that, go forward, and do that. So that should happen this year. We're using all paint. We're not reconstructing a lot, just in case. Everyone has buyer's remorse. We will be able to put it back, but we think it will be a net positive. I think the road diet has been a net positive on the south end, and it's helped spur some important business growth there. We want to move to repairs next on the Batel Highland Corridor. That street is very bad, and there are a couple of other ones that we have identified that are also awful, like Lennox and a couple, yeah, that are, that are bad. So we're going to try to address those and prioritize those in the next couple of years. As well as various side streets, city parking lots, we're going to seek some bids on some of the lots. The worst lot is probably Green Acres Park. It's really bad. It's not just bad, it's really bad. So we're going to see what we can do to make something happen there. Maybe we can get our friends at the county to help us a little bit more. And then we're going to continue our tree and sidewalk program, and we're ongoing and on schedule. Compliments to DPW team on this. Thirty-one new trees were recently planted, and I was able to secure, make a call to the Sutire Foundation and secure a $40,000 grant to help us cope with and cover the cost of planting new trees when we take them down. So continuing a little bit, and Serene will have a little bit more on this, but we did sell the money-losing ice arena. You'll remember in our 2023 goals and objectives, ice arena was there. We said either renovate or sell the ice arena. I'm pleased to tell you, we sold the ice arena. After losing money for over two decades, the ice arena has been sold. The city is developing a friendly relationship with the new owners, and we're working on dates for community events. So we're going to keep an ice arena in our community. It will just be operated by professional ice arena managers and owners who do this for a living, and it is their business. Park improvements, and I won't steal the thunder from the recreation director, but as you can see, thanks to our relationship with Oakland County, we have many new park improvements that are happening. A few years ago, thanks to the Sutire Foundation, we were able to put the playground in at Scout Park that the entire community built. Well, now, we're concentrating on Green Acres Park. And remember, Saturday, 11 o'clock, all five of you, we're cutting a ribbon, and we're unveiling the new playground in Green Acres. Cooperative efforts with the schools. Junior Vikings is a hugely successful program. We're going to continue to support that program. It's time for us to probably make another contribution to that program. This is a school-city cooperative endeavor that's really expanding athletic opportunities for the kids in our community. So you can all be very proud of that one. The cameras at Scout Park, those have been repaired. We're testing them. It's an ongoing process of tweaking. Green Acres flooding, we utilized our own Axolterra, and that has helped alleviate a lot of the flooding. So Axolterra is amazing, and they're continuing to put Hazel Park on the map around the planet Earth. All of their drills are called Hazel, so they like us. We're cooperating with other communities for recreation. We share leagues. We share all kinds of things. We're currently hosting the Ferndale Seniors, and we're open to all kinds of cooperative endeavors with other recreation programs, and we have all kinds of new programs under development. In terms of communications, again, don't want to steal all of Linda's stuff either, but our utilization of video for public education and publicity for businesses and events is, it's off the charts. I want to thank Brian Lucas for his expertise and his videography, which is fantastic. These videos have been very well-received. We're pushing newsletter subscriptions. We're pushing NEXL subscriptions, and we're expanding the people who have capability to do those notifications, because it's usually been just me doing the NEXLs. So now, more department heads are able to do that in case I'm unavailable, and we should be able to utilize that system even more, but it's been very successful. Schools have indicated willingness to share one of their magazines with us in the future, you know, so that's a, that's a possibility up there. And then, you know, I think that we do need to highlight all of our positive accomplishments some more. So in terms of personnel, talk to you, we're always doing succession planning, like I said. City manager's office, Train Lacy, also Train Jared, Train James. We're expanding Linda Yonos responsibilities and capabilities. Police and Fire, we want to identify future leaders, as well as DPW and Water. Want to send folks to the Certified Public Manager Program. That's open to all of you, members of council as well. If you have time, you can go, and Murma will pay for most of the cost. We continue to expand our applicant pool and going with concentrated efforts on ensuring qualified and diverse applicants. We're promoting health and wellness initiatives to save money. Jared, I'm sure, will be talking a little bit more about that, but these things have been very successful. Also, they're creating healthier employees, which it helps when they use premise health, because we save money on our self-insurance program, but it also helps with all of our healthcare costs when our employees are controlling chronic issues like diabetes that can be very costly and very debilitating and will cost us a lot of money over time. We also do ongoing training in first aid, CPR, self-defense, active shooter, de-escalation, all kinds of things, and we do those on Fridays when we are close to the public. City and schools cooperation, again, Junior Vikings is a huge success. The schools recently received a community schools grant. The city obviously passed a resolution in support of that. We submitted a letter in support of that. They did receive the grant. Dr. Croupy has contacted me, wants to discuss with us how we can work together to use that facility to the best of our abilities for the best result for our residents. So we'll do that. Of course, we're, our own building, we're in the process of renovating as well. Schools, youth assistance, Coalition Court partnership, and again, that's kind of ongoing, and it's kind of always evolving. I had the wonderful opportunity to spend time with Andy and Jared and Chief Buchholz at the Youth Assistance Awards last week. It's wonderful to see these young people and the great things that they're doing. So, and again, sharing facilities and resources, we share all the time. They share with us, we share with them. There should be a cooperative working environment. I know there's discussions and sometimes differences of opinions on things like the millage, but nonetheless, we will continue to always work with our school partners and do the best that we can to serve our residents. Festivals and special events. I'm not going to read all of this, but last year's Memorial Day, after some serious problems the previous year in which many festivals were canceled, we did not have those problems. We put together a new comprehensive security plan last year. It worked very well. We made just as much money as we did the previous year, and that was the record-breaker. We're only short less than $2,000 difference, and everybody who attended had a very safe and happy time. So we're going to continue to take a look at those security measures and see how we can do better at everything. So, but it was all a giant success. And of course, Nick Dragon, who was last year's grand marshal, he served in combat in Vietnam, and he has been a member of the Mobile Communications Support Unit since 1973. So it was a 50-year anniversary for Nick. And again, the High Tide Festival went well, changed in scope a little bit, but everything worked like a charm. Juneteenth, that was going to be a joint effort with the other communities. It ended up being something that Hazel Park put on, and they came here and joined us, and that was a very nice event. So I was very proud of that. And if some of the events for the future, we talked, we've done a first responders dinner in the past. We'd like to do that again, boards and commissions dinner, see what we can do to help Arts Council with Arts Fair. Talked about doing concerts in a park or concerts out here on a Friday night at City Hall in the courtyard here. And then our tree lighting ceremony, we changed that, and I think it was successful this year. And, you know, once everybody finds out that, we have a donut truck, and we're giving them away. I think we'll get some more people next year. So with this, this comes to the update on fiscal year 2023. I'm going to bring Lacy Christiansen up here. Before I do this, I want to tell you how proud I am of the people behind me, my department heads, and the people who work for them. They do an amazing job every day. I will match my department heads against the department heads in any city in the state of Michigan or the United States of America. They are that good. We are not as rich as our neighbors. We are much less rich than Ferndale, Royal Oak, or Madison Heights. We still provide the same level of services, so I want to thank them. Lacy? Lacy is not just finance director, she is also the deputy city manager, and she's going to run through some of the things about municipal finance, because I'm sick of hearing me talk.
Good evening, city council. I'm going to move at a decent clip, because you have a room full of department heads who are just eager to speak to you. So we're going to do a quick recap of '23, '24. I'm going to slip my, I'm going to jump the line and slip my goals in, and I think Ed's going to take back over and talk about some historical data. And I think Ed's going to take back over and talk about some historical data just for, you know, update knowledge and then for the residents to understand a little bit more about where we're coming from when it comes to property taxes and some other values in the city. So for 2023 fiscal year, this of course ends in June of 2023. We ended the unassigned fund balance, we had an addition of about $227,000. And we had $150,000 that we have assigned. It was a donation that the city received, and we have it assigned for recreation. Some of that has been utilized for the Junior Viking program. And then we'll work with the rec director to see what else we need throughout the city to help with some of that $150,000. And we also have a restricted fund balance this year of $110,000. That was for the opioid settlement, and we have to restrict that based on the laws. But that's helped to utilize the, for the public safety, police and fire to utilize to help with that epidemic. This past year, we used $396,000 of the ARPA funds, and we spent over $1 million to improve roads, sidewalks, and additional $800,000 on other projects, City Hall roof, some other bigger issues that we had going on. So for fiscal 2024, the year that we're in right now, we're again projecting a balanced fund balance, no addition or subtraction. We're going to use the rest of the ARPA money. This will be the last year of it. We have about $750,000 left. And then after that, our ARPA money of 1.7 is depleted or utilized. Right now, we're receiving inflated bank interest rates, which is a positive thing. We have, we'll end this year with almost $1 million of bank interest. So we're pushing a lot of it to our investment accounts and trying to capitalize on those interest rates. We made the final ice arena bond payment this year, $612,000 made in September, and we are done. Yes. Close that fund out, and we should be, we're all set. As I talked about the marijuana tax revenue a little bit, this year we collected about $595,000. Again, that's earmarked for pension in a slide in one or two back, where you can see the increase in the pension costs. And then again, we, as you know, we're awarded a lot of grants this year. We have the community center, we have the pole barn pop-up, the pension grant, again utilizing ARPA. And I'm sure the next slide shows some of the successes.
I have a question.
Oh, sure.
Just one question. On the pension that we were very underfunded.
Yes.
At a certain percent, if you want to state that, whatever it is. What does this $12 million bring us up to?
Well, we were hovering around the 39% to 40%. This is supposed to, in theory, bring you up to around the 60% required funding. However, they were using numbers from a few years ago because of the way actuaries are. But either way, it's a positive, we'll be close to the 60% is what this is supposed to do.
$12 million is always a huge cost.
Yes.
Absolutely. I just was wondering percentage, because we've been so underfunded and it's been a, even though we're making the payments they tell us to make.
Correct, yes.
That is a correct statement.
We've never defaulted on payment. We're making our monthly payment, but with, you know, with just the changes, you end up falling behind. So this will get us close. And as you know, PA 202, a few years back, they changed the requirements of what we have to do. We are pre-funding OPEB now by $150,000 a year, so we have about $800,000 put away for OPEB, which is retiree healthcare costs. So some of the PA 202 things we have done, but this will help immensely.
And for the public clinic, if they would have never cut us our state's shared revenues in 2002 and on, we would have never got to this point because there's $38 million or $28 million, I can't remember which number it was, that we, thank you, that are due to us, for the general public, they need to know this. And at the State House, again, back to what Ms. Klobuchar said, is who the ones are really hurting us the most. We do our job as local politicians trying to maintain what we have here with a great staff, with the opportunities that they provide us, and also the employment here, they give us the information and do a very good job and provide a lot of services for our residents with a little bit, with the lower pay structure than other cities. And we appreciate that.
Yes.
But we need to get that money back. Thank you.
Okay, we can, we'll pass through this slide. This is some informational, information on some of the grants, but I'm sure those that were in charge of it would like to take the credit and the thunder for that, so I will not take that from them. So if we move on, fiscal year 2024, some updates, some additional updates and highlights. Inflation obviously is still an issue, so the cost of goods are, continue to climb. Cost of fuel has been up, costs for just general maintenance and repairs, vehicle and fleet replacement, and obviously just our everyday operating supplies, everything is seeing an increase. Personnel costs continue to increase as well. We've had to, you know, restructure some of the salaries and wages to maintain our qualified workforce. We're not just everyday employees, they're certified, we have the qualifications, we have things that we have to maintain in order to keep our certifications, and it's a, they're very good jobs and they're very good employees, and we definitely have to maintain qualified personnel. We have healthcare inflation and of course pension costs, even with the $13 million, pension costs still continue to increase. So the next slide, there's just, this is just some of the comparing March 2023 to 2024. You are seeing a small dip in, you know, some of the business licenses or some of the permitting, I guess, landlord licenses. Investment income you can see go up. Research and development, which is, you know, the training of our people, that is very important to develop them and put some money into our own R and D that is holding steady, our fuel's going up, and you can see scripts are up immensely from last year at this time. The next slide is just.
If I may.
Sure.
I want to interrupt your thunder here.
When we bring in our consultants from Manquinn Vance, they tell us that the city of Hazel Park is doing the best job to control prescription drug costs of any of their clients. Again, I did used to work at a hospital. I take a look at the formulary, I understand what I'm looking at, and so does Lacy, and we watch these things very closely. But you're going to see increases that we cannot control, okay? There's new classes of drugs coming out, and these biologicals and these engineered drugs, they work, but they are very expensive. So this is a trend. This trend isn't going to go away, it's going to continue to plague us and be an additional cost.
One thing that the city does have going for it that our HR director pushes a lot is we do have a wellness center that really controls the cost for, for the employees and for the employer. So we appreciate him urging everybody to go there, but from a financial standpoint, it's very important as well. This one is just a historical pension cost slide. You can see, you know, in 2018, it was 2.3, and this year we're going to be about 4.5 million.
Nearly a 50% increase in less than 10 years.
Yes, yeah.
I'm sorry, 100% increase.
Right, doubled, yeah. Doubled, yep. So we, we did talk to MERS, and originally, we were under the understanding that we would not be able to use that $13 million or $12 million included into like the actuarial evaluation to reduce. It was kind of set aside.
It's their initial policy.
Yes, and set aside in its own pot. We've met with them, we've talked with them, we kind of pushed them, and our understanding now is that we can pull that into our other divisions and that it will help reset in a few years, once the actuaries catch up, it should help us reset some of our monthly payments. And then I'm going to jump in and do my financial goals, which is not a slide up there, but you do have a handout. We're just going to continue capitalizing on increased interest rates while we can. Obviously, it went from like $200,000 to $1 million, so that's going to help close some of the other increases in expenditures. We are transitioning into invoice cloud for some of our payments, which helps with, and then we're trying to get some e-check, like the e-checks for reduced costs, so you can pay your water bill or property bill, property tax bill without added fees. We are upgrading the phone and voicemail system throughout the city so that all different departments can be interconnected. Plus, I've heard a rumor somewhere from many people that you get caught in a loop when you call the City Hall, voicemail to voicemail to the different departments, especially when we're closed. So we're hoping that this fixes that, and it also reduces our costs. City manager says he's never had a phone system that worked well, so we will see. We're going to give it a shot.
Can I ask, is the upgraded phone and voicemail system, will that also include an updated or upgraded website? Can we?
I think Linda Yono works on that, and I know she's in the process of doing that.
Cool, cool. Yes. I peeked through and I didn't see that specifically as a line item anywhere, so I was like, well, this kind of incorporates.
Yeah, she manages that, thankfully. Single audits, we will need single audits for '24 and '25. Single audits are if you receive or spend a certain amount of federal dollars. So because of ARPA and because of the pole barn and pop-up Hazel Park, we will be required to have single audits. We're just going to continue working on our grant projects. We're continuing to invest in employees. I work a lot with Jared and the city manager on looking at wage scales and fringe benefits. Just make sure that we're offering and retaining our employees. We're going to keep training the accounting staff and the treasury staff. I would like them to grow, make sure that they're satisfied in their positions and that they're getting challenged and moving on in their careers. And then for me, just continue to involvement in the legislative matters. And then now I think we're going to do a quick property tax recap with, with the city manager and a few other historical slides that he can help explain where the city is and where we've been.
Thanks, Lacy.
Thank you.
Now, I have a rather lengthy explanation of the interaction between Headley and Prop A. As opposed to reading that, I'll give you the brief version. Headley, named after a guy named Richard Headley, who, subsequent candidate for governor, who was the chairman of the proposal. For our purposes, there's lots of things in Headley like prohibitions and unfunded mandates, but when it comes to how it affects us for property tax revenues, in a nutshell, Headley says, you can't get more than the rate of inflation from your existing tax base, and when you do so, you have to roll back the tax rates. Now, something that used to happen in the past, prior to Prop A, local units were allowed to roll up the millage rate when growth was less than inflation, becoming self-corrective mechanisms that fluctuated with the market and inflation. When Proposal A rolled around in 1994, because school funding in Michigan was a disaster, they raised up the property taxes, and school in Prop A also divorced your taxable value from your assessed value and capped that taxable value at 5% or less, whatever the rate of inflation is. So it's, again, we've seen that happen, and the two things there mean, doesn't matter if property values go up, because you'll see in a minute, we've done very well at adding value in Hazel Park if you're a property owner. Okay? We've, we've done our job extraordinarily well. It has not translated into anywhere near as fast as an increase in our taxable value. So everybody understand that. You've all heard me talk about this ad nauseam, so I'm not going to read this whole thing. The next slide. Okay. This is all of the resident, all of the residential assessed value changes in every city that Oakland County, in every township that Oakland County does equalization for. I will draw your attention to the city of Hazel Park at 13.58%, which makes us the winner out of every city in Oakland County under their equalization department. We did the best in increasing our residential property values.
No, you're right.
Yeah, arguing a bit.
Okay. I mean, one of the town, some of the townships where they're in sprawl areas, well, look, that is in the boonies, and they have all kinds of land that they can redevelop here. We're fully built out for like the last 50 years, so I think what we did is just a little more impressive. And flip to the very next page.
It wasn't a personal insult to you, Ed, I promise.
I, I, what's that? I said cities. I was very precise, because I know my graphs. This is change in taxable value from real property, okay? Cities, look over here. Hazel Park, 10.05%. Once again, we are the leader in terms of the percentage that we increased our taxable value. We did very well. This is very hard to do when you're in a pretty much fully built-out community. Well, our redevelopment strategy has been working, it's paying off, and as you can see, again, I am, you guys know I'm freakishly competitive and I like to win, but I'm, I'm happy when, you know, we're in the top three or the top four, and we have been in the top three or four in these categories for like the last four years. So we've been doing something right, and you guys have been doing something right. So you can show your voters that you're adding value here. Here is Hazel Park's historical taxable value. This will tell you a story. In 2008, before the property value crash, Hazel Park's tax, total taxable value for the city of Hazel Park was $347,223,860. We haven't even gotten back to that yet with all of the increases in assessed value. Our increase in assessed value takes us beyond that, but because of those Headley Prop A blocks, we're still getting less money in property taxes for a mill in Hazel Park than we were in 2008. Everybody understand that. Everybody at home, I hope, if anybody has any questions when we show this meeting on tape, please call my office. I'll be happy to explain it, and I can explain it until you die of boredom.
Ed, an easy explanation is like what each mill generates from our city versus other cities.
And we have a chart, we're going to find that. I have a cool chart that, we didn't get it in today, but we're looking for it, that shows in relation for what we, we have. But you can kind of look at the taxable value and move the zeros over and see what it will generate, okay? And now you see here, the, next one, please. So these are the, these are the taxing authorities that we have here. As you can see, when you pay your tax bill in Hazel Park, the city only gets about half of that. The other half of your taxes go to, the biggest one is school facilities. Beyond that, then there's the county and the state, the community college, and the library. So we have this, you're, I guess I literally, we're usually a little less than 50% of the taxes you pay here, stay with us. The rest go to those other entities. Now we have some historic millage rates here for the city of Hazel Park. As you can see, again, the Headley amendment kicks in. People who say, I'm tired of my taxes going up in Hazel Park, your taxes are not going up in Hazel Park, okay? You look there in 2020, I mean, 2020, we were levying for operating mills, 15.24 mills. Now, in 2024, we're down to 14.19 mills, okay? All of our tax rates have gone down every single year. The only thing that stays the same, and I'm glad it does stay the same, is a special assessment for public safety to assist with our police costs, because that is the one tax that Ashley Capital does not get a brownfield break on. So we definitely want to keep that in place. We will need to renew that because the state has amended PA 33. We can now do that renewal with a notification and a public hearing, a vote of council, as opposed to needing an election. We do strongly recommend its renewal, given the uncertain revenue picture we're facing in the future with elimination of ARPA money, and it will be a change for the state of Michigan.
When does that fall off?
Falls off any year and a half, so we will need to be renewing that sooner rather than later, okay? We'll get the process underway, and it'll be much like the fund we had with the lighting assessment renewal. So, but anyways, as you can see here, all of the levies reduce.
Just to clarify some language on that, the individual taxes that people are paying are going up, but the taxes that the city is assessing are not.
There is a factor that we get from the treasurer based on the rate of inflation with a smoothing factor of two. with a smoothing factor of two years, and we get that rate. So even in like a high-inflationary year last year, where we had one year where they kind of stayed the same, as you can see from that chart, the taxes only went up a percent or so. So again, there, and that's because of the increased value. So those caps are real. And when the taxable value is declining, those actual tax bills went way down, because I lived here and every year my tax bill would go way down. And I would be screaming, no, because I know, I knew what that was meaning for the city of Hazel Park. So here you have some historical tax mills here. And the one thing here, you can see that everything goes down. The two that do not go down is school debt. And the school bond has been 15 mills, 15 mills, 15 mills. It does not reduce with the Headley amendment and Prop A interaction. Neither does the state education amount. And then not in here is an 18-mill non-homestead for the schools that businesses and non-homesteads pay, and that does not reduce either. So, and then Hazel Park's goals. We're going to continue investing, as Lacy said, in our employees and focusing on recruitment, retention, and training while mitigating pension and healthcare inflation costs. It's important to remember, everybody who works for Hazel Park almost has a license to do their occupation. These licenses make them valuable employees everywhere on the market. We had to raise up pay for police officers and firefighters mid-contract because we have to retain them, because the way the ARPA funds were dispersed was terrible. The larger communities got three times the amount of money per capita than we got. And it created an inflationary spiral with respect to police and fire positions. Couple that with the anti-police sentiment that we had a few years back. It's very tough to find qualified people who want to do the job and will do it well. So we're hoping that that pendulum is swinging back and we're seeing that a little bit. But the net result is a big increase in cost for those types of employees. We're going to complete the grant projects, and we're very proud of that. And you'll hear my department heads talk a little bit about that. Obviously concentrate on local street repairs. We're going to continue working with commercial and residential developers, concentrating on commercial redevelopment in the downtown area. We're going to put pressure and lobby legislators in areas directly impacting Hazel Park. And you guys can all feel free to make those calls along with me. And we're going to continue to provide excellent services to the people of Hazel Park and whatever goals and objectives in addition to that you set for us. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to probably Serene Papakian from Recreation, so she can be out of here in time to rescue her dog from doggy daycare so he doesn't have to spend the night.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Long time no see. I would like to start off by saying, in my 10 years of working in the Recreation Department, this year has been the most exciting and the most rewarding. I'm just very thankful to my staff first and foremost, and to our county and all of our partners that we work with. So to start off, just at a personnel level, we have recruited Amanda Taylor, who has worked in the department for 12 years as an Assistant Recreation Director. And that's been very helpful to just kind of have an equal partner in how we move forward and work in the department. We've also hired one more sports supervisor, and that's also helpful in terms of youth sports and partnerships. Additionally, we've worked towards diversification of programming in the department and partnerships. This includes reaching out to all kinds of different organizations in the county and our neighbors. Just keep reaching out to our neighbors. Madison Heights is a neighbor that, you know, we really didn't talk too much with for, you know, some reason, but we really have reached out and it's been beneficial. We've worked with MSU Extension, the Charles H. Wright African American Museum of History, Pleasant Ridge. We've been working with the school district on working with the Junior Vikings program that has been highly successful, as Ed has told everyone. So we're thankful for that. Just recently, thanks to Alyssa, we were able to get an Arcan training program. And that brought out over 20 participants and was highly successful in, you know, a program that saves lives and is working towards that goal. In addition, this year, we've been doing a lot of grant management. So far, the department has received $900,000 in grant funding, $200,000 for a senior citizen grant program through Oakland County Board of Commissioners, and that has helped us repaint the exterior of the community center, get new gutters, just do a whole bunch of work that's been very tangible. We have a new marquee outside, electronic. I think it's the first in the city. Very exciting. So we're very thankful for that. In addition, there is $400,000 that has been spent in Green Acres Park to build a playground that hits our master plan goals, which is very important. We outline a recreation plan and, you know, you want to hit your goals and objectives and you actually want to follow through with that. So this playground is very inclusive. It includes sensory components, musical instruments, ADA compliance in terms of walkways and all of the components in the playground system. So that's really exciting. I would like to remind everyone that this Saturday, on April 20th, from 11:00 to 11:30, we are unveiling the playground with Oakland County Parks and the county executive. So I invite everyone to come on out. Please bring your children. Let's have fun. It'll be really exciting and it's a great structure. So we're very, very, very thankful for that. In addition to the $400,000 and the $200,000, we have an extra $300,000 that we are putting back into the community center as well. Oakland County is building an exclusive office in Hazel Park, and they're building it in the community center here. So we are very thankful for our really great partnership with Oakland County Parks. And they've been tremendous in terms of being a partner, coming out to Hazel Park, really wanting to serve the residents in southeast Oakland County. So this is an exciting project, and this should be done by the end of this year. So the majority of the work should be done by the end of this year. And this is ARPA money that has gone through Oakland County that has come to us. So we're very grateful. In addition, we are having a lot of new events this summer. We are partnering with different groups to, and Oakland County Parks to bring new programming and events to Hazel Park. This includes partnerships with youth assistance, Hazel Park Youth Assistance, specifically the Fire Department, Oakland County Parks. We're going to have a movie in the park. We're going to have a family fun night, summer fun fest. So really trying to listen to the residents, see what they want, and trying to serve those residents and meet their needs. So we're thankful for that, and that comes at a low cost from the county. Additionally, we are looking forward to our next recreation plan, which needs to be passed in January of '25. We've received $50,000 through Oakland County Parks to pass both a recreation plan and a pocket park plan, which will help, you know, our smaller parks and making sure our residents know where they're at, how to find them, and, you know, just really bringing those public spaces to life. And we have a lot to look forward to that I can't speak to, not to be, not to be, I forget the word, but just, I, we have, we have good news coming. I can't say it now, but it's a lot more money. And it was a lot of hard work and partnership with the city manager's office, specifically Jared Gajos and the Assistant Recreation Director, Amanda Taylor. We've been applying for a grant to get money towards the pole barn. We've applied twice. And so we look forward to seeing what comes of the awarded money from that.
They want to announce it, but it's a smart grant.
And I will not announce anything that's not public.
Wait for the news at the next regular city council meeting.
Yeah.
And we'll see you there.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm very excited to announce it. It was, it's nice to see hard work pay off. So I think that's kind of the feeling this year.
Sounds like you've been busy this year.
We have been. And lastly, the Memorial Day Festival is coming up, our annual Memorial Day Festival. We encourage folks to apply to be in the parade. We're hard at work at that. We have the same carnival company as last year, and last year was a great success. So we're very thankful and we're looking forward to both the parade and the festival and the veteran ceremony that falls on Memorial Day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Serene.
Thanks, Serene.
Can we take a five-minute recess? We head into the rest of the objectives and goals from our department heads?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it is my honor to present to you my outstanding Fire Chief, Chief Richard Story.
What up, Chief? How you doing, sir?
Good. Evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for seeing us.
I'll get right to it. So goals and objectives for this next year are set up the department for a change in leadership. Myself and two other members are retiring.
You had to do that to us, didn't you?
This one?
I said, you had to do that to us, right?
Okay.
You had to retire on us?
What's that, sir?
You can't retire.
Oh, I am. Yeah, I'm going. Myself, Mike Shero, Brandon Stinet, we're all going. So that's the last of the Tier One firefighters for City Hazel Park. Tier Two guys are outstanding. They're if, the same, if not better than we are. Not saying anything about ourselves, but you have a great department to come, coming up right now. Two, continue to try to hire dependable and reliable employees. Since COVID, the job market interest in firefighting has reached a low. As a byproduct of this, people interested in the fire service can choose their own path, as the city manager said earlier. Thanks to Lacy and City for keeping our wages comparable. It's keeping our staffing at a better level, but people always think the grass is greener somewhere else. And then they learn the hard way that they should have stayed. We have a new fire engine on order. It should be here by June. Just started getting assembled this week, actually.
Chief, what is a new, is that the engine? That's not the ladder one?
Fire engine, yes, sir.
Something like that run nowadays.
Almost around eight to a million dollars right now, depending on who you get it from and how you outfit it. So they're forecasting a million, two by '25 for a fire engine. And ladder trucks are in the two millions now, which I'll get to in a moment.
Thank you.
Sure. Bullet point four, I've submitted a grant request to the Assistance of Firefighters Grant. That's our federal government grant program for a new ladder truck. I've also reached out to a state representative to help secure funding. He stated that he requested the monies in his budget, but he will not get an answer until his budget gets approved. So I do have two different venues trying to get funding for this. This is a $1.8 million to $2.1 million vehicle. As you know, our truck's a 97, so they are a long-term vehicle. It's not a short-term purchase by any means. It is a five-year build on those trucks also. So from the date you buy it now, it takes five years for them to complete it. Our current ladder truck is, the company that makes it has gone out of business. So parts are becoming harder to get. We actually had a window crank custom-made, because they don't make it anymore. So that's going to be a problem. The truck is in good condition still. It still operates okay, but it's the age and it's not going to be rated much longer. Bullet point five, train another group of residents and more Hazel Park employees in the CERT team. We kind of fell off of that a little bit. Our old CERT coordinator retired. Our new guy took it over. He couldn't get a trainer to train him. We're finally all done with that. We did a CERT CPR class recently to keep the CERT people up to date on their licensure and that. Now we're going to follow up. I talked to Tony Galati, he's my CERT coordinator. He actually said today he can give me a date next day, next day. So probably in the next three weeks to a month, we'll have a date for that. Hopefully we'll get, we have four people in the community that are interested and probably 10 to 15 employees that are not certified that would take advantage of that. Fire department will continue to be involved in community activities. We're always available for training or escorting kids with fire hose. You call us, we'll try to accommodate outside of our emergencies. We do a lot of stuff with private groups, the school system, you name it. Show up and we'll give you a tour. Maintain our building. We have budgeted for a new asphalt driveway. I have a few sections of concrete getting replaced on our emergency ramp, and DPW is going to do some sidewalk updates. Continue our hands-on training. We went to the, a hands-on flashover simulator, which was great. I sent everybody, including myself, to that. Brian put on a short video, which was great. It's good hands-on training. I got four people that are 22 years old with no experience, so it's good to get that real heat, that real, that darkness and that scaredness. So it was very beneficial. That was paid for with a grant through Oakland County. Continue to train our firefighters being promoted. We have a fire engine operator class, Fire Officer One, Fire Officer Two. These are all stepping, step trainings to get the guys to go from firefighter to basically a sergeant, which is our fire engine operator lieutenant, captain. Continuing education with lithium battery fires, hydrogen cell fires, and any other new hazards we may encounter. Building constructions, even worse than it was. Our time in a new construction building is about two minutes before collapse. When I started in this business, we had about 20. So things have changed dramatically in that. They're using a lot of plastics, which is worse for us, too. Continue to walk through all new businesses, establish muscle memory and understand what's in our commercial spaces. Continue to work with other city departments, provide the best services we can. Work with our neighboring departments to be as safe as possible. We train with Ferndale and the Heights pretty regularly. Continue with Hazel Park Police to stop the bleed with their training. And then point 15, retire. Thank you for everything you've did for us as a city. Wouldn't be here without this city. It's been a great, great place. And thanks for letting me run it.
Thanks for being our chief.
You're welcome.
It's been short, but I've enjoyed it.
Little story about Chief Story before I bring up the next speaker. I was out over, across the street, and there was a fire at China One a couple of years ago. And three police officers were standing behind me. And the ladder was up over, and Chief Story was on the ladder, on the top of the ladder with the hose. And one of the cops, and you know, there's a little bit of a rivalry sometime between police officers and firefighters. One of the cops says to the other cop, you know what? Chief Story's the shit. And the other cop said, yeah, he is. Look at that. Look at him go up there and fight fires. He is really a good dude. So when you're hearing people from other departments say good things about you like that, then I think that's a high compliment. So I won't guilt you anymore for staying another year. I don't think it'll work anyways, although I don't know, I can be really persuasive. But thank you for your many years of wonderful service for, to this department and the great job that you do as chief. Speaking of chiefs, who may be looking to do something different with the rest of their lives, I will bring up my wonderful, highly dedicated police chief, Ryan Buchholz.
Don't tell me you're going to retire.
I would like to, yes.
I mean, we all like to, but that's not, no.
Not everybody at one time.
Much like Chief Story said, any success that police departments have is because of our staff, not just the patrolmen, command staff, my civilian staff, my two Kims, the administrative. They all are the reason for any success that we have. Can you still hear me? So I don't have to bend.
You're just fine.
All right. Anyways, we're, with our smaller numbers, we're still being very proactive.
All right. Anyways, we're, with our smaller numbers, we're still being very proactive. And I think we're still being very successful at what we do. Crime stats are low, arrests are up. Motor vehicle theft compared to the first three months of last year is down 72%. I believe that's a big part of the Hyundai and Kia theft that was going on. I think that's, that's over, hopefully. There's type A crimes and there's type B crimes, and then there's everything else. But type A is you're more violent crimes, that kind of thing. That's down 29% right now. Class B crimes are down 16%. One thing that is up is crashes. That's up 24%. And most of those, and almost all of them are at the major roads. And that's why we do what we do. Our traffic stops, we try to do what we can. It's just, overall, it's not just here. It's all over the country. It's, the driving's horrible right now. Magistrate Mitchell has been, in my opinion, a huge asset. It's improving the morale of what the officers do. Helps with the purpose that, you know, we make an arrest, and they're getting a bond when they need it. They're not just walking out the door. And that really makes them feel like what we're doing has, they do have a purpose. Let's see here. Our flock cameras have helped tremendously. Thank you for that. It helps our investigations for the most part. It's also, our guys are very proactive. When we get a hit that comes from another city, we've helped catch some major criminals in the tri-count on the area. Just in the past two weeks, we had a couple of really good ones. And we've recovered a lot of, a lot of stolen vehicles that way also. We did just this past week get our two radar signs, and we just got them up yesterday. And those, those are up in the neighborhood, in the neighborhood right now. The third one is still, got back from repair yet. Thank you for opening up the contracts for, for our staff. We are retaining better. We had one officer leave for another jurisdiction nearby and another one that left for police work, but everyone else we're retaining pretty good. The challenge is finding qualified applicants even to just apply. Officer Crouch is, should be off his training pretty soon. And Urjon is in the academy right now. He should be done in May. With that, we, with those two, we still need five more to replace what we, what we need. Ray DiNofrio coming back full-time has actually helped out a lot. I didn't think he was going to last this long, so I'm really thankful for him. He's very productive also, so. $29,500 in consent agreement money. We got bar versus vehicle forfeit, forfeiture. Anytime a crime, certain qualified crimes, we use that for. That legislation may be changing. It's a topic out there. Kim Klein and Janine Lady, they did the property room audit. Was zero mistakes. Those two are working great together. We're doing more training than ever. Our defensive tactics, emergency vehicle operations, active assailant training through OCTAC, de-escalation techniques. Grant funds allowed us to purchase some online courses. Currently, we're with autism awareness month. We're, got an online training going right now. Our nine-millimeter guns with the red dots has improved their efficiency quite a bit. I didn't think it was going to be that good, so that's good. We do have new body cameras and tasers. Those also help with less complaints or gives us a better opportunity to, the complaints we do get, to, you know, refute that basically. And it's also helped in our civil rights complaints and evidence prosecutions. I feel like I work well with my partners here and our other staff, or and my staff as far as fire DPW, code court, everyone. So thank you to all of them. It's been a joy. We did have interviews today for the co-responder program. That's where a social worker is going to respond with us. We liked two of them that are going to go on to the next step, and they still have applications that they're looking at. So they originally tell us mid-June at the earliest to get started with that. The two school resource officers, in my opinion, have prevented and deterred a lot of crimes at the school. We have had less fights this year. And it also provides community engagement with the students, teachers, and parents. So I know, Alyssa, you weren't a fan of some of the tickets and that kind of thing going on. There's been less this year. And that's just because we're getting better compliance.
It seems like maybe a bit more prevention versus punishment, which I, absolutely, A-plus.
Probably, honestly, I'll let you answer it, but it's probably the deterrence.
I do think there's a deterrence. The, the fact that, I know the junior high, we were very busy before we got Porter over there. I think that helps a lot. It's, he does seem like he has a good relationship over there. I've always wanted to update our policies. We continue, all the big ones, you go by importance, but we continue to do that. One thing, we're on a list through Clemis. It's called the jail management system. That just provides better prisoner safety and compliance and help reduce our risk and liability. Brian Forrester, he's kind of a Swiss Army knife. He does so much for us. He handles our, our fleet with the cars and a lot of things that go with that. He's also does a lot of community engagement. He does active violence training, offers it to the churches, and he's done some childcare centers also. So with our numbers down, with our sworn staff, I'm trying to do what we can and put people in other places so we can keep running, doing what we're doing. Because I really do want, I want our patrol on doing patrol work. I want boots on the ground, so to speak. So Lady, Janine Lady coming back, helping in the property room has also freed up Kim, Kim Klein to assist our prosecutors with their increased demands. Our newer sergeants, Brian Connors and Josh Coast, they're doing a good job with their new roles and really taking ownership of their admin roles, admin duties also. So thankful for them. Thankful for all my staff. And that's about it. If there's any questions?
Well, we thank you for helping and working with us for all these years. And we'd miss you if you decide to retire.
We're not going to pretend like he's retired.
He's been talking.
It's, it really has been an honor and privilege. I, that's been great. All of you have been great to me. And I've, I care about this city a lot, and I'm going to continue to even when I'm gone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Again, another outstanding uniform services chief. Brian Buchholz has done a fantastic job. Again, I'm not going to guilt him in how I say that, but I, I still have these little guilt cards that I can play for both of them, maybe extend it a little bit. I don't know. It really is sad because of the outstanding level of performance that we've seen. All my department heads are great. These two have particularly tough jobs, and they do them so well. And so I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to say I'm not going to guilt them, but sooner or later. And again, the good thing about both of these men is they've done a good job of preparing their departments for the future, to adapt, and to be excellent. And that will be a great legacy, whether they go sooner or later, that they will leave for this city. So with that, Linda, Communications. You can be last if you want.
Good evening, Council. As you know, I'm the executive assistant to the city manager. And besides managing as calendar in the office, I assist in addressing and resolving public inquiries and concerns as needed. And I streamline a lot of these questions and concerns and calls to all the appropriate department heads. Besides being a representative of the city manager's office, I am the director of communications. And communications is not just about social media. I do manage the website, Facebook. I do, I work very closely with Brian, which we are super blessed to have, especially, I'm very lucky to have Brian. We are currently working on the website. It's in migration, and it takes two to three weeks to do that. So I'm thinking it's going to be, it's going to be available soon, much more user-friendly. It already is user-friendly. It'll just be a little better. So anything that we change goes from good to better. So that's my, that's my outlook. So being a part of communications, besides managing the social media and other outlets, I'm, I'm a liaison to almost everything in the city, which is you guys. I help communicate with, with you guys and other surrounding cities. I'm close to our sister cities. What else here? Let's see. So. So I have, I have a very good working relationship with the schools, the churches, police, fire, court. I do a lot of the volunteering for, I manage the volunteers, the probationers for the court. Anytime the churches have any events or communications that need to be shared, they call me, they contact me. Like I said, I'm very, I've built a lot of relationships around the city, whether it's with businesses or community organizations. I try to volunteer as much as I can. I am the liaison to the news media outlets. And those include CNG, Daily Tribune, Metro Mode, Our Magazine. The other organizations that we are affiliated with within the county, I am a liaison for them as well, like Myrtle, Detroit Regional Chamber. And what else do we have here? I coordinate a lot of the special events throughout the city. I plan and I organize these annual city events. Mainly, I, I assist in a lot of these areas. So whether it's I'm helping a department head or I'm helping a specific organization, I am there to do, to assist and make sure that everything goes smoothly.
You get the ball rolling. You keep it.
That's, yeah, I do that.
That's what you do. You keep us all in our schedules as well. I think we're all appreciative.
Thank you. So, I mean, when it's all said and done, the bottom line here is that my job is more of a community engagement. So I engage the community in everything that I do, in my communications, my correspondence. Even when it comes to like a Facebook post, I try to, you know, engage the residents a lot, as much as I can. So I'm very resourceful and I love, one thing about my job is I love helping people connect and network with each other for their highest good. And I've built some really good relationships across the board, so I'm very, very happy about that. And this is just a template, what you guys have in front of you. So if you have any questions, God bless you.
Thank you for doing such a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
A prize of everything that happens. Sometimes we get forgetful, and all of a sudden I hit this text.
Don't forget, thing.
Don't forget. And it's very helpful. As little, as little as that may be, is very helpful to us. And other things that you do to set up our schedules and help us with the different events through the city. Oh my God, there's so many different things going on, and sometimes we just don't know how you all get it all done. And you're the head of getting the ball rolling.
I do a lot of the behind-the-scenes stuff, and I'm totally okay with that.
And we think.
Linda is an indispensable resource.
Thank you.
I've actually got a question.
Yeah.
Is there the room or ability to add headcount in your, like, city, city manager specifically? Because looking at similarly situated communities, you're basically functioning in the role of community engagement specialist, director of communications, and executive assistant. And that just seems like a lot. And just wondering if that is feels sustainable or if.
So that's a very good question. I have a very non-traditional role. And my skill set, I'm a people person, so it's, it comes instinctively to me. I do a lot of multitasking. And basically, at the end of the day, I'm going to steal my manager's slogan is I exist to serve the residents. And I keep that in mind every single day, especially on a Monday.
As a fellow assistant, I understand.
That's right. Yeah. There's a lot of other things that I do that you guys are aware of that I have not mentioned that can go without mentioning, but it, stuff gets done. And to answer your question, Luke, it is sustainable, and I love it. If I didn't like it, I don't know if I, it would be sustainable. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Linda's, Linda's master's is in social work from the University of Michigan. And like a good social worker, she is a master of brokering, linking, and connecting and finding resources to make things happen. She is a master fundraiser for the Promise Zone. That's why she was honored a couple of years ago for her efforts. She's just a real asset. She is my office secret weapon, and I appreciate her very much. And I will now go to my other office secret weapon, Mr. Jared Gageos.
Well, after that great speech you gave at the, uh, thank you, Youth Assistance, I don't know how you still have any energy to keep giving more speeches.
Thank you.
This is a lot.
So I know that's a lot, but, you know, human resources, when I first came into this position, didn't really have a dedicated office. So, you know, we've really worked to develop that. I guess with HR, we'll start with there first. I'm the director of HR. My name is Jared Gageos for the Public Watching. So the biggest thing we handle is healthcare. So as Ed and Lacy and everyone else has stated, we have a consortium with our sister cities called Premise Health. And together, we provide our, our employees with so many services, like events, flu shot events, health coaching, free medication through our consortium, emphasis on free. A lot of people don't know that, but we do offer free formularies and just continuous programming throughout the year. Further, you know, we really push these events and programs, not only because it saves our city some money in the long term and provides us with data of what our employees are suffering from or feeling, but in the long term, it really helps our employees deal with issues that they are suffering from, which is one of our main goals. So between 2022 and 2023, we increased our utilization of the center by 4%. I know that doesn't look like a lot, but we started off strong with our employees using the center. But in the long term, we increased by 35,560 minutes spent treating Hazel Park employees, which translates into 592 hours or an additional 35 days, or 25 days, my bad.
What is, what does NCNS stand for?
Where do you see that at?
Right.
Oh, no-call, no-shows. So in a health center and everything, you know, like, let's say you wake up and you're, you're still sick, but you don't feel like driving to the place and everything. You can either call off, or you just don't show up and you don't inform them. So we did reduce that rate by, it started off at 2.2% in 2022, but in 2023, reduced that rate to 0.8%. So that right there illustrates to our council and to the department heads how needed health services are. So the premise health really focuses on not just acute illnesses, like something like flus and things like that, but chronic, right? Diabetes, hypertension, mental health. Diabetes, hypertension, mental health, and we're very lucky to be able to provide this to our employees, to their families, and to their dependents. Going further with that, we did our annual review recently, that's where we sit in, and they kind of tell us, what did we do right, what did we do wrong, hopefully more right? And we saved the city $36,466 just in 2023 alone, and that's a total savings of about $137 for employees. What that means is that instead of going to a traditional health doctor or to the hospital, they're coming to a service that we're providing, which saves them almost $150 annually for this. I know it doesn't seem a lot, but for an employee that may be struggling, has a lot of bills, things like that, that's really, really beneficial. Further, finally, we did our annual review, so now we're trying to do more onsite registration events, you know, teaching our people why premise health is so popular, things like that. We're partnering with other health partners, not just to develop apps that we have, but to provide them with more services that focus on their chronic illnesses and acute illnesses. As Ed and Menche mentioned, or Lacey mentioned, we have been talking to Make One Vance about the cost and our formularies and everything, so be able to provide free formularies is great, but, you know, to expand on that, you know, we would love to see, but as Ed mentioned, you know, when you have things that cost a lot of money, we don't control that. That's the medical field, things like that. I wish we could, save us a lot of money, help a lot of our employees, but unfortunately, no, we're not there. Going further, we have our assistant, employee assistance program, so...
For the public's edification, can you explain why we hope to increase the number of member visits to premise and other avenues?
Yeah, so the reason why we want to increase our employee utilization of premise, it's not just saving us money in the long term, you know, that's great and everything, but like I said, we really care about our employees, their health, their dependents, their dependents and their families. So when they're utilizing a service that is essentially free to them, you know, we're not just getting data on what we can then provide to our employees. Like, let's say, we have a lot of employees who are diabetic, right? We're seeing then that we can provide programs that help with diabetes in the long term and stuff, which then we're able to tie into employment retention and recruitment, because that allows us to say, oh, we provide these programs for you, come and work for us, or you know what, we see that you have these chronic illnesses, you should stay, because we care about our employees, we want to save them, and that's why we're called a friendly city, actually.
If I may, we, we are self-insured, okay, up to $100,000 for every employee occurrence, okay? And then we have a stop loss after that. So we're paying for this doctor at premise health, and we're paying for this program no matter what. So every time an employee uses that, we save on our city's self-insured Blue Cross health program. And plus, as Jared said, we help our insured personnel manage chronic problems that could turn into something very expensive in the future. So if we can arrest diabetes, like Jared said, and we can, we can make this intervention sooner rather than later, we will save not just on our city's self-insured program for that appointment, we will, we will reap benefits from that employee throughout their entire career. And if they're one of the few left on retiree healthcare benefits that they will have, we will save those monies forever. So, I'm sorry, Jared.
So, yeah, we're ultimately trying to help our employees, not just see what we're offering, but understand, like, if we discover that you have a chronic illness in the early stages, that's amazing, you are now understanding, like, oh, I have this, how can I work to achieve getting better? Well, the city can help you with that, or we can at least recommend you to the health partners that we are trying to partner with as the years progress. Any other questions before I move on? Okay.
Question.
So we do have our employee assistance program, this is an EAP, and it's called CARE. The reason why I really want to emphasize this is that we provide free therapy. I know a lot of employers have a hard time doing that, therapy is very expensive, but how it works for us is that you get six visits, one assessment, and five services meetings, whatever you want to call it, and this is per topic. So let's say you go in because you are suffering, suffering from an illness, the next time you utilize all your services, you can go in and say, now my mental health is suffering. Boom, you got six more services to deal with, which is awesome, so you technically could be utilizing the service for as long as you're employed with us. Something I want to recommend to the public, just in case you want to come work for us, as all the department heads before me had mentioned. And not just over that, right? We want to make sure that everyone is understanding what CARE is. It provides services such as understanding what a divorce feels like, how to help as a family suffering through illness or loss. Let's say that you want to prepare, prepare for death, it has certifications that can teach you these things, teachers and stuff like that, that is all free. So this is a really important topic for us to really emphasize on. And then going into my just general HR duties, you know, organization's a huge one. When I first stepped into this role, there wasn't really established duties, policies, things like that, but now, you know, I've worked with other department heads to understand job posting, evaluations, and things like that, so that if one day I decide to leave here, someone can step into this role more efficiently than having to figure out everything through the knowledge of like Ed and Lacey. Further, we do evaluations, and I know a lot of people may see evaluations as a contentious thing, but for me, I see evaluations as understanding employees. You know, if I'm seeing someone every day and they're smiling and typing, I may not know that their family member has passed, unless I'm talking to them. And then when we do this biannually, we're understanding, what can we do to help you, but what can you do to help us, and how is that partnership? That way, again, retention, we're seeing a grand retention here. Further, as Lacey and Ed have mentioned, we're trying to do succession planning. Succession planning is really important when you have wonderful people like Chief Story leaving, you know, you want to understand what are the next years going to look like, but not five, 10, or 15 years from now, what is that going to look like? And further, with salaries and things growing, you know, we want to make ourselves competitive. You know, historically, we were always one of the lowest cities with salaries and benefits, but now, if you look at the charts, we're actually beating out other cities and becoming more competitive to be able to recruit more people and say, hey, I don't just want to work for the city because of this medical benefit that they're offering, but, you know, they're offering higher salaries, higher benefits that can benefit me and my family in the long run. So outside of HR, I'm also a special projects coordinator, and basically what I've been focusing on lately is grants. The first one is our HUD Community Meeting Space, or the Poll Barn Grant, and that was awarded to us for $505,000 in 2022. So we've been trying to partner with other grants to help improve this $505,000, which Serene put me on hold on one that, so I'll talk about that at another meeting.
You know that grant?
Yes.
Yeah, we all know.
He's giving us, but doesn't want to talk about it.
Correct.
We don't know about that grant.
But with the Poll Barn Grant, you know, the schematics are out there. It shows what additional resources we can give to our community, not just through the recreation center, which does a good job of that, but through an additional meeting space where, you know, protected groups can meet, you know, it's gonna be aesthetically pleasing. We'll have a concession stand for a sports group to utilize, and an indoor and outdoor bathroom, which is great, in case you're having a wedding inside and a baseball team outside, you don't want those two crossing for the bathroom. But yeah, so grants is a huge thing we're focusing on, so that's, that's pretty much it now.
Thanks.
Of course. Thank you, guys.
Keep being excellent.
Real quick, I didn't get any class for my very riveting and robust financial.
The comparativeness is coming out.
Oh, geez.
Aw, I broke my pen. Dang it.
Yeah, you can go again. I do have some special employees. I have some, my employees, you've heard me say it, I'll say it again, they're great, and I will bring up now a, truly a Swiss Army knife who does all kinds of things and juggles a ton of responsibilities, Amanda Mason.
Is it just a surprise who you call up now?
Yeah.
Hello.
Yeah, we didn't know what order we were going in.
Oh, hi.
Well, thank you for that introduction. That does kind of sum up my job. I think I do what I'm needed, what, what's needed of me, and I kind of put out fires every day. So, again, for the public, I'm Amanda Mason, I am the department head of the code department, I also am the department head of the cannabis department, a city attorney, and generally help where I'm needed. So with respect to the code department, I am very proud and happy to have such a wonderful staff. We are down a code officer, so we have three code officers currently, but still maintaining, you know, the numbers, the enforcements, et cetera, of, as if we have four. So definitely doing more with less, there's really great synergy down there, we have a great teamwork, have weekly staff meetings with them, there's a lot of communication, and I have a wonderful assistant, so that helps a lot as well. But with respect to doing more with less, and I've talked to the mayor about this, actually, multiple times, we are trying to focus on specific enforcements a little bit. Obviously, we're looking at all of our codes, but we're really trying to narrow in on addressing the big issues. So some of those are different by area, some of those are different residentially, but obviously dealing with the seasonal issue, so grass and weeds, snow, but then also blight, nuisance properties, vacant properties, and then the things that you see, you know, when you're walking down the street.
That's the one you and I were talking about.
Right.
The perception of what we see around our neighborhoods, is the windows look good, does the doors look good, the steps, they don't have holes in them.
Correct.
And the railings, and, and everything's painted, just the basic stuff, and the weeds are cut.
Exactly.
And you've addressed it perfectly, and things have gotten better looking around the town.
Well, thank you. We try, definitely. Also, so, yeah, dealing with the junk and debris, the improper outdoor storage, cars improperly parked, like in your yard on, on the actual front lawn, à la Clausen in the old days. Also addressing business licenses and landlord license and dealing with those. And then every day, we deal with neighborhood complaints, we get several daily. I pride ourselves on, we try to have same-day-to-next-day response and at least looking at things, and then I also address, several times a day, someone wants to talk to a supervisor, but I am one where I personally go out and take a look at the situation, because I like to be able to say, I've put my personal eyes on it, yes, I agree with you, I think we did it wrong in this case, or, you know, I think we got it right in this case, and let me tell you why. I personally saw it, this isn't just one of the officers telling me how this was done, this is my take, and so we try to find a solution that way. So that's with the, more the residential, then we're doing the same type of targeted enforcement with commercial properties, sort of case by case, like, obviously, for eight-mile area, we're really trying to crack down on blight, on graffiti, on litter, vacant and abandoned properties. We definitely see a correlation with the graffiti being on properties that clearly appear to be vacant, that have the boarded-up doors, you know, and windows versus those that don't. So we're definitely trying to tackle that. Ten Mile, for example, we are trying to tackle improper parking, storage, I'm really proud of the work that we did to get a lot of the vehicles that were right there behind the restaurant on the corner of John R. and Ten Mile, we have that under control, looks like a completely different area, I'm very proud of that. The whole department was out there tagging cars, and they really complied, and it's great. Doing similar things also on Dequindre, and trying to, to just deal with the parking that's there, it's an ongoing team effort, lots of people help with that. So, and then also dealing with landlord licenses and the inspections there, I have spoke a couple of times on this, but sort of irresponsible landlords that maybe don't take the best of things that they can do to protect residents, we're definitely trying to help with that and crack down on those things that sometimes people think aren't necessary, but really are in the scheme of, of dealing with people, and people spend a lot of money on rent, and so we're trying to make sure that they're in safe homes. Also focusing on continuing certifications and trainings for the code officers, they love doing those, they participate in MACIO, ACE trainings, they have weekly, monthly trainings that they have, there's ongoing things they can do. And then continuing and increasing our community engagement, the community may not know, but the code department always volunteers for like, or they clean up, for park cleanups, other cleanups. After big storms, they're out driving around, they get out of their cars, and they help when they see the elderly picking up branches, like, there's a lot of stuff hands-on that they're, that they do, and so we're trying to continue that. Updating ordinances and just sort of, that's part of the legal part that crosses over with the code department, also kind of always ongoing with that, trying to update ordinances, change things, make things so we run smarter and more efficiently, and then coordinating with other departments, a huge part of code is coordinating with other departments, we liaise with every department daily for all kinds of things, tagged houses, board ops, water, fire, coordinating with DHS and other state agencies, when we have, regularly we'll have CPS, APS, things that occur, clerk's office for licensing, the court, city attorney, Melissa, all those things. So that, that is what we are continuing to work on, and just cleaning up the city.
Thank you.
And then cannabis, so transitioning to that, I, that's just been an ongoing process of sort of continuing as we go, I'm streamlining the renewal process, we have everything up and automated, I'm really proud of the work that we've done, it's been a few times that we've tweaked and changed around the very, very lengthy application process, because there's a lot of legal requirements, so we go along with that, but we have fillable PDFs, which is Herculean when you're dealing with like a 30-page renewal application, so we have that going. We've developed a frequently asked questions section, we've developed, I've got checklists that have happened, we've developed, just going through and, in conjunction with Treasury and with Lacey, going through and dealing with just the invoicing system, tracking that, different ways of doing that. This year, I think what I want to do, hopefully, if there's time, is have an appointment system for renewals, so that everybody, because there's a lot that goes into it. We also streamline, they have to have quarterly inspections, and so when they do their renewals, which we have a universal renewal date that we didn't used to have, it's June 30th annually, or the Friday proceeding, having them schedule all their inspections all at the same time when they're in. So they visit every department, they go through, we make sure taxes are paid, we make sure invoices are paid for various things, it's a lengthy process, so trying to deal with that. I also work with the Cannabis Regulatory Agency a lot, that's a huge part of my job, there's constantly things that are going on there, also trying to get involved legislatively with some things with Ed, with how we can make things work better for some of our cannabis community partners. And then really in the point of contact for coordinating with law enforcement, if there's an event, if there's a break-in, if there's any of those things that happen, it all kind of channels through me, and I make sure that everyone is doing what needs to be done in the appropriate way. I'm kind of tired, so if, if there's more numbers, I have lots of numbers and lots of additional things to share.
We have a question here.
Yes.
Who has the cannabis industry in general, the, we have 10 dispensaries and processing and testing and transportation, as far as violations from the state, how is that, how have they performed?
Um, I mean, so I get notification of all that, there's, of what's occurring, we don't tend to, because I get notifications of, you know, and then you can also see what's happening statewide. I think comparatively speaking, we actually are really, do well in Hazel Park, but yeah, there are some, but, you know, it's sort of like the Liquor Control Commission too, where it might be like they filed a financial statement late, and that is a violation, that's not something that should happen, it's a huge fine, but we haven't had any major things, we haven't had anything where anyone has been suspended or shut down in terms of, there's been nothing noteworthy whatsoever, so I think we've done a really good job, and I do attribute that to, you know, I'm accessible every day, you know, I mean, obviously, I have other jobs that I'm doing, but we very much work hard to, like, if there's a question that needs to be answered, the CRA knows the point of contact, they know what they need, you know, to do on our end, at least from our side of things, so. But yeah, I mean, there are, there are some that have happened, but for the most part, it's been paperwork administration, nothing of note, and nothing certainly of note. One thing that will be on the horizon that I should bring up, I'm sure you're all probably aware of this, but we are getting to a point where we are gonna have to look at the possibility of places potentially might want to be selling assets and doing things like that, so that is something that will be around the corner, I would imagine, that's already taking place with respect to our non-competitive licenses, like Process and Grow's, but I do anticipate next year that we will have someone approaching regarding selling of actual dispensaries, so that is something we 100% are gonna have to address and look at more closely, which we knew would come, it's, it's been years now, so. I think overall, Lacey covers the financial part of things, we have all the numbers, we're doing well. 420 events are obviously coming up this Saturday, we've got, the emails have been going out, for the most part, it looks like all the facilities are operating for the most part during business hours, I let our chiefs know of when those operations are, and I will be around the city making sure that no one has any issues with Andy. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, Amanda is also a big part of our legislative team as well, so she works with me on lobbying issues and things like that, and she's become...
She forgot one more.
Oh, she does, she do that too.
She does that too. So we're moving on to the next one, Tim Young. She does that too. So we're moving on to the next one. Tim Young.
I've already.
I've heard you talk about water before. Like, I know you got it covered.
You actually put timers on everybody?
Tim likes to talk about water, guys. Look at the folder he just prepared here to us.
Tim, you take as much time as you can.
Ready?
Oh, did you?
Okay, go. Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
Did you get my email the other day?
Hello, everyone. My name is Tim Young. I'm the Water Sewer Superintendent for the city. A real quick overview of our department. We are responsible for the water system as well as the sanitary and the storm sewer system. Each system is about 60 miles of piping, so if we were to stretch that out in a line, we could go to Lansing and back and then some. So it's a lot to take care of. The responsibility of our utility workers basically is keep it flowing. Don't let the system break down and don't let it get stopped up. I like to tell my guys, when you're out there and you see something, don't ignore it. Never let a should become a must because that creates twice as much work. Before I get going on this, I just wanted to introduce you to my staff. Most of you know my department supervisor, Steve Dubay. You've probably talked with him in the past, but I also wanted to let you know about my office staff, my assistant Danielle Hamilton, and Tori Duval work at City Hall. Their job is to maintain the accounts and collect the payments and help residents with calls, organizing appointments. And they do their best to facilitate issues right there before we have to send service people out. So they're very valuable to our department. And then for our water operator or street workers, we have Rick Castleman, Mike Roskovich, Dylan Rogers, Mike Booker, and Jacob McTernan. These are the people that are out in the trenches, the ones that are getting after it every day 24/7. So I just wanted to make sure they got proper acknowledgement for their hard work there. As we move over to the accomplishments, I'll quickly roll through this. And if you have any questions on it, please let me know. The packet I gave you in the folder goes into each one in greater detail. So if you hear something that you're interested in and just look it up, and it'll tell you a little bit more about what that actually means or what it does, so. So we completed a yearly required lead service line replacements, 30-plus homes, no violations. Completed our ACO mandated cleaning process, no violations. All regulatory samples of 288 samples were completed, no violations. That's water samples of different varieties that are required. Our PRV maintenance program is great. We've got the PRVs now working in conjunction in sync with each other, keeping our pressures better equalized throughout the city. When we have new construction developments, we collaborate strongly with the contractors to help ease their concerns on how things need to be done here so we could have done right the first time. Daily operations and system management, I am absolutely amazed, and you'll see in that pamphlet, how much we actually do in a day, all the different operations we do just for general maintenance. And then, of course, our after hour responses and holiday responses, our day and night, our guys are out there for us. So. Moving on to some of the projects that we completed in the last year. We've done some sewer linings. We've done eight different sewer linings where we've just rehabbed the sewers without having to dig them out or replace them. Easement evaluations and lining rehab of sewers. This is a new program we started last year and it's been excellent. So we have companies can clean and evaluate each individual easement sewer, and if it needs any type of repairs, rehabs, we'll do it. The goal will be to eventually line every sewer, easement sewer throughout the city, but we're going to go through the rotation to grab the worst of the worst first and get those going and not let those wait, and then we'll come back around. The I-75, I'm sorry, large sewers cleaning, we did Nine Mile and John R. It's a little bit bigger than the city can handle, so we did contract that out and got those extremely large sewer lines opened back up. The I-75 project, which was three years in the works. My thanks to the crew. They were diligent about being out there, responding, assisting Dan's excavating MDOT. And because of their efforts in watching and seeing what's going on, we had $2 million of infrastructure improvements done by the MDOT project. We had two miles of water main, sewer lines, different things. So I want to shout out to the guys for keeping their eyes on these guys and not letting them cut any corners. We've done some investigation on old Grease issues, McDonald's, Vassar Chambers. We're still working on those as of now. Employee training, employees are all certified through all the mandated training that are required by the state of Michigan. And employee certifications as water operators are listed here as well. Education processes were kind of tough the last couple of years because COVID shut a lot down, and a lot of people that performed those educations just retired from doing it altogether. So they're finally starting to come around again. So we're doing well. Recently, we did do grants over the last couple of years. We had a Myrmid grant, which helped pay for some sewer camera work. I'm sorry, sewer camera purchasing, a DWAM grant from the state of Michigan, which was your famous exploding toilets newscast, as we all remember. There you go.
Can we elaborate for a moment to the general public because this may be aired as to why toilets may just all of a sudden?
Yeah, because the sewer line is just an open pipe from your house right into the city line. There's nothing in between. The only thing that stops anything from the smell or anything is just the trap water that's in your toilet bowl. You'll see that water there. That's a trap system or underneath your sinks. And at times, depending on the design of your house or the tap location, when a high-pressure sewer jet cleaning system is used and that jet head runs down a line and then starts to pull back, the suction of that can sometimes pull that water right through from your toilet. If it moves rather quickly, it'll do like a wave. It'll pull it in and then push it right back out. And this is why the people claim the toilet explode because it will splash the water right out of it. So depending on, like I said, your plumbing design or the tap location on the main sewer is going to regulate what kind of pressures can happen, so. Okay. The next grant we got is a critical infrastructure grant from Oakland County. That's a $100,000 match grant for engineering costs, which we're going to be utilizing to the next grant, which is the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, which is a state loan. We're going for a $10 million loan from them. It's not something that we have to accept, but since it's out there and this is just about the only funding for lead service line replacement and water main replacements, we're going to throw our hat in the ring and hopefully move forward. Like I said, if we do get a word that Lacey and I will be reading everything through and looking at all other options before tackling any type of loan thing, so.
Can I ask a quick question about the lead replacement line? James and I were in a Zoom where they were discussing about the longevity of that program. Can you talk about, because I did peek at your info inside, but can you talk about like the, are we on schedule for the expected completion date? Or are we, like many communities are saying they're going to have to, that they actually need an extension on that date because of the lack of funding?
I don't, the way the state of Michigan has behaved on this program is there won't be any type of extensions.
Okay.
They, you know, everything I've had to deal with with them on the whole thing, it's like, well, no, that's the deadline. So matter of fact, the EPA just revised the rule, which is going to shave off time. I mean, it's going to make these deadlines actually sooner than later. And the state of Michigan's hands are tied on that, so we'll see. As far as what we're doing, we're meeting the minimums to keep the cost down. We're hoping to see some funding show up and/or the law that seems to kind of be mixed on if it's right or wrong, get challenged and get straightened out. I guess my own opinion is if this is such a problem and such a health crisis, where's the funding? The way they behaved on this thing was the sky was falling, but nobody's giving us any money. So I don't, I don't know what direction to go with it, so we're just taking it one step at a time.
That was definitely the commentary on the discussion thread as well.
Exactly. So that's where we stand with that, so.
But we're on track for your info here that we're.
We're meeting the standards. They've set the percentages. However, we've reached some milestones, and so these numbers are going to increase drastically next in 2025. We'll be good probably through the remainder of 2024, but 2025, we're probably going to triple in what we have to do, which is going to be, we're averaging $200,000. We may go to $400,000 or $600,000 a year mandated to be replaced. So it's going to get, it's going to get a little tight there with that, but we're making it work. All right. So the next thing would be public service and clerical things. I wanted to mention these because of who actually has really been the lead on this. So full-page water bills, which you now are receiving, and email water bills, which some people want to go paperless. I want to thank Danielle Hamilton. She really put this together. It was something we would always talk about. She'd keep asking me. Finally, she just grabbed the bull by the horns and made it work. Signable water documents versus coming to City Hall to sign things. Again, Danielle and Tori, they grabbed this one again and organized it. So we have certain things that need authorization for us to do the work. And sometimes under emergencies or whatever, but you know, if you're at your job in Pontiac, you just can't jump and run here and sign a piece of paper so we can do something. So they've lined this up so that people can communicate. This also has helped with our public relations with the public. It doesn't, we don't look so demanding. It's, we work with people. The double checks is another thing that's not offered by many cities, actually none that I think of. So after we do meter reading, Danielle and Tori will go through, and anything that looks odd about a meter read, they're going to send a service guy. We catch, we sometimes catch problems as they're happening, or we reaffirm with people why their bill was high. They might say, how our tank broke. Or we may walk up and find the garden hose on and that's why it's high. So that really has helped people with their billings. And then in public outreach, we have a lot of tips and how-tos on our social media site. And I want to thank Jared and Linda for their assistance on that. They helped me to put it in the right place and make sure it gets out there to the right people. Miscellaneous things that were accomplished, we had an Eagle MS4 audit in June. We met their expectations and we didn't have any violations for that. And then how are water rates determined? I did put a big write-up in the packet there. So if you're curious how that all comes about, because we are coming up on time where the water rates are going to go back out, and that'll kind of explain things and low-cost comparisons on, you know, how you purchase water from us versus going to the store, that kind of thing. Does anybody have any questions on these accomplishments before we move on to goals? Okay, so moving on to goals. We have 13 regulatory reports due this year, and we have to increase our samples to 408 for 2024. That's due to a EPA program that we have to take samples for PFOS and lithium, which do not exist in our system anyways, but it's a nationwide data gather. I'm looking at a new metering system. Our current metering system is 20 years old. The newer system is like you guys taking your first cell phone you ever owned and comparing it to your new cell phone. Okay, so it's definitely something that we should be looking at. The data that's offered with new meters, we can tell you almost to the minute when your meter turned on and used water versus now. We want to add some gates on the South Dequindre Water Main because we have to shut down so many to just do a simple repair. I want to stop causing so much disruption to water users down there. Replacement of water mains, whether we do it through SRF or a budget, the three that are targeted by us is an Eight Mile Water Main, a Dequindre Water Main, and an Endreasing Court. We want to loop that. The Eight Mile Water Main is my pet peeve because that is actually in the center of the westbound Eight Mile. So basically, that's like walking out onto a NASCAR track to do a repair. It's just incredibly dangerous and it should never have been left there when they've widened Eight Mile all the years back. So we're going to look into getting rid of that thing and put it over on the sidewalk or under the curb line. And then the other water system goal would be to upgrade our SCADA system. The SCADA system currently is off the PRV pits. It's about 20 years old program. We want to upgrade that to being something that's more cloud active. However, I want everybody to reassure that it will only be for data gathering. There will not be controlling valves or anything. So I am a believer that let's keep that stuff off of a computer. I don't need a cyber attack telling the valves all to shut down. So anything we have in the city, you have to manually go out there and operate it. This will just be a way for us to read pressures remotely and not have to bring people into the building to look at one little screen in an office that'll step up. On the sanitary sewer side, I want to create some sanitary relief flows along Falco Avenue. These have a lot of dead-end sewers that a relief flow is, just goes backwards. So if the sewer tends to back up at all, it will flow opposite direction to another sewer and not back up into the houses. So we're looking at about nine different locations for that. The Landmark Church Development, of course, they've spoke about that. We're going to make sure that sewer line is properly addressed there. Vassar Chambers, which probably doesn't mean anything to anybody, we're going to eliminate those. Those are just big square boxes in the ground that used to be part of a sanitary pump system. The only thing they do is they just kind of disrupt flow from time to time. We're going to get rid of them. Motor City Fasteners has a septic tank that we're going to connect to the sanitary. 364 Gouldson has a city manhole in his garage, which is the dead end of the sewer line. So we got to get that addressed so we can properly address the sewer line when we have to maintenance things all together. Yeah, it was an amazing find, I'll tell you that. And then continue that sewer easement program of the 12 zones. We'll keep going with that. Some ordinances that we're looking to helping to revamp is the grease ordinance. There's way too much grease now entering the system. It seems like everywhere is selling some kind of food now. And party stores are all selling pizzas and fried foods. So we're going to be looking into what our grease ordinance says and revamp it. We do have a grease program. We dump a lot of chemicals in the line to break things up, but we shouldn't have to do that at all. And then there's a storm utility that the state of Michigan is looking to request, and I'm just watching what they're doing because nobody's going to move forward until they can guarantee nobody gets sued like they did in the last couple of years there. Another one for customer service and clerical is going to be auto bill paying is coming or auto withdrawal. A lot of people like that option. And my thanks to Lacey Christensen and Danielle Hamilton. They're the ones that are pulling that together. I don't know the exact start date, but we'll make sure we notify. And the grants, the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. The original thing I mentioned at the beginning was our intent to apply. The state accepted it. So now we're actually putting in the application. That's due by May 30th. And then equipment and for employees, training and equipment. We're looking at, everybody's taking the S exam again this May. They're in a class right now twice a week for the next couple of weeks. I would like to also replace a vehicle. We have a large dump that ended service in 2023. I'll look for a replacement, most likely used, because this truck is designed just to, its use would be just really nasty, dirty construction jobs. I'm not going to purchase a new truck to break it, so that's what we're going to look at for that. A new concrete saw, and then a GIS system, which we're going to upgrade. It's 20 years old. It's not practical. And part of the Oakland County grant is funding for a portion of that as well. So in closing, I do want to thank my fellow department heads, city management, city council for their continued years of support to my department. But most of all, as we keep moving forward in 2024, I want to thank my incredible water sewer operators and my clerical staff because the accomplishments listed at the beginning of the report would not be possible without their commitment. And then knowing they have that kind of commitment, we can, we can look at. And then knowing they have that kind of commitment, we can, we can look at goals and know we can achieve them. So anybody have any questions?
On the question night, on the auto bill paying, are we going to put a cap in place?
I don't know the exact details.
For the safe, for a safety cap for, so we don't, if we have a situation, we want to withdraw $1,000 out of someone's bank account.
Everybody's allowed to pick their cap.
Okay. Just wanted to meet you. And thank you again for your well-thought-out speech here. It's well, it done well.
Thank you, Tim.
Tim does killer infographics.
It was a great overview. I appreciate it.
Again, I teased Timmy about being a little bit long-winded, but he's probably, yes, give him my hand.
You did a wonderful job.
He, he is probably the most knowledgeable water superintendent in the state of Michigan. He's completely thorough. He takes his job very seriously because again, drinking water is very serious. It has to be clean. It has to be properly run and maintained. And he is an expert. And we farm him out to other communities who do not have water operators with a type of certification that he has. So we've helped out Madison Heights and Ferndale in the past when they have not had S1 operators. We are not required to have one, but they both are. And he serves, has, has served as their operator from time to time. Very smart man, very dedicated, does his job extremely well. And that will segue into Lisa Mayo. You can keep to the 10-minute rule or less.
They brought us some snacks.
Who is counting?
Me.
What a good city clerk.
You definitely knew how to follow that with that comment. Go right ahead, Lisa.
Good evening, Mayor.
Get that microphone.
Thank you for taking the time out to listen to us this evening. God, I don't think these things mean anything. So I know everyone here knows me, but for the residents that don't, my name is Lisa Mayo and I am a certified municipal clerk for the city of Hazel Park. I have worked here for almost 24 years. And three of those years was in the water department when I started out. And I think Tim and I kind of almost started at the same time. But with that being said, when you think of the clerk's office, what is the first thing that you think of? Keeper of the records. The clerk's office is indeed the keeper of the records. However, record keeping is not just a silver lining of the full scope. Elections fall under what we feel the number one essential focus in the clerk's office. Let me take a minute to give you a little insight into election. Elections consist of various moving parts. There is the scheduling of election inspectors, election publications, ballot ordering, laptop updates, loading the election, testing the tabulators, as well as the VAT, which is the voter assist terminal. Precinct kits, public accuracy tests following the election timeline that is set by Michigan election law and setup and breakdown for both early voting and election day. Since 2019, when we were able to purchase our laptops or as we call them, e-poll books with HAVA funds, they have seen nine elections, although this may not seem like a lot of use. These are essential for the election process. We are in the process of getting quotes and finding possible grants to help assist in the purchase of six new poll books. Additionally, we are always looking for election inspectors. If you or anybody you know is interested, send them by and we can explain the process. It is a paid position. It doesn't pay much, but we will also feed you. The election process truly never stops. Yes, as we have only one election a year or maybe two, but this year, unfortunately, we have four. And as a clerk, this is an everyday duty. One of the more important processes to note comes from QVF, Michigan Qualified Voter File, where there is a daily inbox of all the registered voters that are, are deceased, have moved into or out of or within Hazel Park, as well as name, birth date, gender changes, or out-of-state moves. And during an election, there will be online AV applications, as well as notifications of those who have joined the permanent absentee or the ballot list, I'm sorry. Each change, except for those that move out of Hazel Park, require each voter to receive a new voter ID card. In addition to each voter card, there is a mastercard on file. The mastercards are, are the paper backups for what is electronically on file in QVF, the QVF system. QVF is the communication with the Secretary of State. This is how all voters and, and data is kept up in the day, and date and inaccurate as possible. If any of you are interested, the mastercards are kept in two giant rolodexes, which Nicole thinks are pretty cool. Stop by and check them out sometime. Before the first election was even under our belts, we were preparing for our next election on May 7, which focuses on the special school improvement bonding proposal. 2024 sees the new election law changes from proposal 22-2 that was voted into law in November of 2022. New laws mean new processes, deadlines, and Michigan offering early voting. The 46th state in the nation to do so. In addition to having early voting as a new option to vote, voters can still vote absentee, AV, via mail, in person, on election day, and on election day. Hazel Park is in agreement with Oakland County for early voting, which we are grateful for, and partners with our neighbors to the west of us, Ferndale and Royal Oak Township. With this partnership, we have the support of the county. Most expenses are covered when it's a federal or, or, sorry, state election, as well as the equipment that is needed for the nine days of early voting, which saved us a ton of money. Further, Hazel Park's early voting site is hosted at our community center. Without the continuous support of the community center's director and the director's staff, this would not be possible. Election quick facts. Hazel Park has approximately 13,266 registered voters, 1,149 voters on the permanent ballot list. February 27 saw 1,921 voters at a 14.58% turnout. Primaries don't normally see much traffic. I think the school bond probably will see more than that. Stay tuned for May 7, August 6, and November 5. 2024 started off with continued preparation for the presidential primary. February 27, as well as our south, south end landlord licenses expiring January 31 of 2024. Our south end rental properties by far exceed our north end rentals. We sent out over 1,400 reminder emails to owners, responsible parties to let them know of the expiration date and soon approaching in the details on the renewal process. And as you can imagine, the renewals do not come one at a time. They come in groves. In this office, we are always thinking of ways to better improve the process of renewing a license, communications with other departments, and as well as owners and responsible parties. Another essential focus in the office is the Freedom of Information Act, one of my favorite things to do. Over 200 FOIA's were completed in 2023. From January 2024 to April 15, 2024, there have been 137 FOIA's processed. FOIA requests can never be predicted. Not many understand the process in its entirety and the amount of time that FOIA requires, as well as working in conjunction with the departments, which include the police department and the city attorney, to retrieve the information requested by the FOIA deadline, which is five business days unless extended. And they can get a 10-day extension, or we can get a 10-day extension. It is, it is worth noting that more than 80% of the FOIA requests are police-related. City council meetings, and with that being said, if it wasn't for Nicole and Sammy doing the other duties and the job, there is no way that I would be able to process these FOIA's in the timely manner that they need to be processed. They do an amazing job in the office and I am greatly appreciative of them. City council meetings play yet another essential focus in the clerk's office, making sure that we have all documentation ready for the meetings and communications with all department heads. Agendas, council packets are assembled, printed, and electronically sent, as well as providing the information on the website. After the meeting minutes approved, license, contracts, and any other ordinance publications get processed. The office also handles the various license provided in the city. All businesses, landlord, short-term rental, vacant structures, pet, food truck, sign erector, solicitor, handbills, fireworks, block parties, ice cream vendors, junk collectors, all get processed and issued through the, this office. Various other clerk duties include Mirma insurance claims, set appointments for psychological and physical exams for all new hires for the fire and police department, codifications of new ordinances, titles, license plates, tabs, renewals for the city's vehicles, bids, boards and commissions, list and minutes. This year, Nicole attended her first week of training of her three-year program to become a certified municipal clerk through the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks. She has procured a grant that covered 50% of her first year tuition. And hopefully we can find more grant money in the next year. I also attended Continued Education Day myself in early April, provided through MAMC. Continued education happens on a consistent basis here in the clerk's office. Last but not least, our office is, is the city's operator. This is a good chance that when you call City Hall, you will be speaking to one of us because most people just press zero and it comes right to our office. We will always treat you in a courteous and professional manner and answer your questions, questions to the best of our ability. And if we cannot, we will direct you to the proper department. Thanks, everybody, for listening to us tonight. And again, I would like to thank Nicole and Sammy for all they do. Nicole has been in the city clerk's office for approximately three years and Sammy has been with us one. And I am grateful for the team that I have to work with me because if it wasn't for them, my job would not be possible for me. And I am greatly appreciative of that.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
I just want to say, Lisa Mayo has probably worked every department in this city, at one point or another, or helped us assist in other ones.
Super cross-trained.
And she's worked her way up through the ranks and became a city clerk. And we all saw that happen a little bit ago. And we want to say thank you.
I'll bring up now James Finkley, who stepped into a new role and done a very good job with this. Again, I'll ask, got to keep it to 10 minutes. But he's probably got a lot more than that to say, but he's doing a great job.
Evening, everybody.
I'm stepping out for just one moment.
Okay.
Don't take it back. I'm so sorry.
So just to cover building and planning, I would, I guess first want to say that without basically every department in this room, we wouldn't be able to do any of the things that we do. So thank you to everyone. The building department with Lynn and Julie and Roger, the building official, and also our inspectors, Bob, Bob, and John, between January 1, 2023, and March 26, 2024, processed 1,558 permit applications, including 16 new homes. Over 6,000 inspections were conducted, including 46 special inspections. 48 properties were tagged as unfit. For the planning department, we had five planning commission cases and two ZBA cases in that time. Main Street Hazel Park, during that timeframe, adopted mission and vision statements, transformation strategy, amended bylaws, became independently insured, installed the gateway sign at the corner of West Mahan and John R., and also recently adopted new logo. Five federal, state, or county grant programs are being administered plus two very small grants. So we're trying to do what we can in that way. We work with 10 boards, commissions, organizations as secretary clerk or liaison. Six new ordinances pertaining to building and code and planning were drafted during that timeframe. We are also working on the new zoning ordinance. Since February, we've had weekly meetings with McKenna. We're going one chapter at a time. We hope to have that to the planning commission in May. We are working on informational packets for builders and welcome packets for new residents. We're working on additional signage in various capacities, including bike routes, gateway signage, and showcase banners. And we will be redoing the sign code once the new zoning ordinance is adopted. So that's some of our stats and goals for the, the coming year.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, he could go on a lot longer. He's been doing an amazing job and I'm very proud of him. Now I will bring up, speaking of amazing, I will bring up Mr. Tom Jones from DPW.
I'd like to hold off on Tom till last.
What's that?
He's retiring. We're going to make him wait till last.
Well, he won't have to wait long because I've got next then Melissa Schwartz. And she just texted me that she's going to be very brief. So.
I'm getting tired of hearing about all these retirements. And I congratulate you all.
Hello, everyone. I'm Melissa Schwartz. I'm your city attorney and prosecuting attorney. And by the very nature of what I do for the city, that's why I need to be brief. Because I serve as the legal advisor, open door to all administration, executive members, staff, department heads. I work closely with them. They work closely with me. We walk hand-in-hand like this to figure things out. And because of the nature of that, that's why it's very brief. I also have an open door policy at the city attorney's office. People come in all day long asking for help. And if there's something that we can do within the office, if not, we put them in the right direction and we make sure and follow up that they're going to be okay. I have in my office a part-time secretary. Her name is Jill. She is absolutely amazing. She works part-time, but somehow she stretches part-time hours into like double time hours. I'm so grateful to have her on staff. And besides the city attorney work, I also am the prosecuting attorney for the civil infractions, the misdemeanors that are from the Hazel Park Police Department and our code officers. This is a very swelling docket. There has to be ongoing flexibility and creativity due to the changes with the MIDC program and dealing with so many different individuals. I've come up with processes and tracking mechanisms within the office so that there's data and statistics that are very, very helpful overall. And I have a 24/7 available cell phone and am often resolving matters on a holiday, late at night, or on the weekend. So the job is either in the courtroom, it's in the hallway, it's on the phone, it's wherever you guys need me to be to get the job done because we are stewards for our community. So I'm very grateful and very honored to serve as the role. And if ever you guys need anything, you always know where to find me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. We have a very busy district court here. When SCIO came in and did the analysis, they found out that we really should have 1.8 judges, which means we should be a two-judge court. That is how busy we are. So Melissa works very hard. And now I bring you a man you've been waiting for because you wanted to save him for last, Mr. Tom Jones.
His retirement's at one time.
I think your Tom Jones is music.
God.
Mayor Council, thank you. I'm Tom Jones, Superintendent, DPW. I'm Tom Jones, Superintendent, DPW. I also have an amazing staff that I'd like to thank. I have my assistant, Dusty Barber, my foreman, Steve Tanshess, and my office assistant, Madeline Brown, plus we have six full-time DPW staff and three part-timers, and one of my part-timers, I think, has been with us for over 12 years. So he must like hanging around, he shows up every day and does a great job for us. Just go over a few things. Like to continue on our tree program. That's where we trim and remove hazardous trees, section by section. Everything's going pretty well on that. We're in section nine. We started at one, and there's 12 sections to get through. We also want to continue our sidewalk program, replacements of sidewalks with deficiencies, and installation of 88 ramps at all corners, section by section. We also want to continue our tree replanting program, and I did have a meeting this morning with the DNR, and they have a wonderful new grant coming, and they're going to make sure that we get all the applications. They're still working on it, but it could be up to $250,000 per community, and that could be used for training, replanting, trimming, and they'll lay that out. So that's real new news for us, and that's a really important one, I think, for our city. We also want to go through and upgrade and replace DPW fleet through leases and purchases. We've been very successful in the last few years that we partnered with Enterprise. We were able to replace a lot of our pickups and some of our smaller vehicles, but they also let us lease a F-750, which is the largest that they'll lease at this time, and we've utilized this for the last couple winters. We've put a salt box on it and plows, and it's been pretty good. A lot of our vehicles were from the early 2000s, and we're keeping them on the road. We do have our motor pool and a little bit of magic to keep everything going. Winters in the past few years have actually been pretty gentle to us, so we haven't beat our vehicles up too much. DPW facility improvements, we'd like to continue. We've been repaving different portions of the facility, and this year also we upgraded our gas station. The computer system that runs it, it actually was stopped being made 20, 21 years ago, so they could no longer find parts for it. So we did upgrade it to a new cloud-based system, and it looks pretty good. We're able to, each month, we run a report for each department, including the schools and all the city departments, and we bill out the fuel that they use. Park improvements, it's always an ongoing, keeping up with the maintenance of the parks, cutting the grass, the swing sets, keep, you know, painting everything, keeping everything in order. Ed mentioned earlier, we want to try to finish repaving Woodward Heights. We do get a matching grant each year from the county. I think we get a $50,000 matching grant is the number this year, and we're very close to getting to Dequinter, so I think we might be able to pull something off. I'm also going to get numbers to repaint that road from start to finish. We started resurfacing Woodward Heights quite a few years ago, so each section that's new got painted, but the other ones need to be hit. Speaking of painting, it should be any day now. We're waiting on PK to paint Nine Mile, so that should be coming very soon. We've been waiting since the fall for them, and they're about the only game in Michigan for paintings, so we're kind of at the mercy of when they can get to us.
Thinking of Nine Mile, we had some repair work done, and that contract got, the contractor screwed us over a little bit, and I know you hired some people to help finish that project. We have some other areas of concern, I can see, by traveling Nine Mile. Where do you think we'll be in the near future on that particular road?
I think, for the most part, Nine Mile's holding up. There are some seams that weren't visible when that came through, so that wasn't a re, you know, that wasn't a total redo, that was cut out the bad and put in the new. So I think maybe a smaller version of that in the next couple of years. And then also, just like our asphalt roads, we've been keeping up with doing the crack filling. So if the road is three inches thick, they say about every three years, we should be crack filling, and that's been working pretty good. If you look at Woodward Heights, for example, we've done that, and the road's holding up pretty good, especially Michigan weather. I guess, local road improvements, and then today was also, today was meeting day. This was the fourth one of the day, so. We had a meeting today with MDOT and our engineers regarding the carbon reduction street lighting grant. So that is something that's through SMCOG, it's a grant, and that is to replace all our streetlights, all the local streets, to an LED light in conjunction with DTE. DTE projects that we will save about $100,000 a year in future bills for street lighting, so that's a big one, too.
Huge.
Yeah. And as the mayor was saying, I am kind of getting at the end of my career. I did start in 1992 at the Hazel Park Recreation Department, and I've been with the DPW for 27 full-time and about a year and a half part-time, so 27, 28, 29 years, somewhere in there. But I'm a big fan of Halloween, so October 31st is my day, my target.
Good date.
To exit from the city.
Well, since you're still here, we have other projects I think we need to look at for this year.
But yes, there's plenty of projects, and I do love this city, and I've grown up here, and I still live here. This is home, so I'll always be around in spirit, but.
I do want to go to one thing, and I think we've all talked about it. I brought it up, I think, at one meeting. Cleaning the streets and sidewalks after the winter to make it more presentable through our main thoroughways. I know we've done it in the past, and I know last few years have been just a parade route. I like to see it go from one end to the other continuously to let the businesses know that we do care as a city and that your tax dollars aren't being wasted. At least they have some visual scene to say, hey, you know, we're protecting your investment as a business owner on the main walkway, and as well, we have a lot of walkable traffic now, more so in the last couple of years than we've had in the past. And I think that's due to the generation of younger and more, you know, kids and people that just want to walk their dogs and enjoy life and enjoy the pleasures that we have here to offer in Hazel Park. And I think that they need to have a nice, clean sidewalk, and we go after some of the business owners for not cleaning their sidewalks as well, so we need to kind of do our own housekeeping.
So we usually do, usually right around this time of year, we send a couple little crew out there with backpack blowers in conjunction with the street sweeper. We just started doing the local roads last couple weeks, so it's about due for that, and it will, we will do that. It will make a great improvement. We also, other little things you might not know that we do, we do have True Green come out and actually do the cracks and stuff up and down Nine.
Couple times here.
John R. and go through. Without that, it, you know, it can get a little rough really quick, so.
I do want to say thank you for the tree program and putting it online, getting all this data together, and helping out with the residents that have been coming at us on a continuous basis. I'm sure you, they've been coming at you as well.
Coming to us.
To us.
To us.
Coming at us, however you want to say.
Right. They're looking to work with us.
Yeah, with us. And Megan has been a big asset to inform us with some information, and I think that's really turned into a positive due to the whole thing. It really has. And we've worked it out, and the way you've listed everything has been great, and even I started looking at it going, wow, where'd all these numbers come from? And to see how many trees have gotten replanted has been fabulous, and changing our tree scape, and now the people, the residents, are actually seeing that we're trying to do a better job with our tree scape. Thank you for that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, finally, I have to thank you, and I want you five to remember that, you know what, this city is ever and only as good as its leadership and its mayor and council. And you know, when we go to some of these other events and we see city councils that are fighting nightmares, and it's just a bunch of egos and idiocy, it's great to come back here to five people that care about the future of this city, work well together, even when they don't always agree, try to find consensus, and we will always only be able to rise as far as you let us rise, and that is the truth. If you guys were five angry, incompetent elected officials, we wouldn't be here today explaining all these amazing things that we've been able to do. Before I walk away, there's a couple things I want to close with. The first one, I wanted to let you know, back in 2006, Mike Webb and Andy will remember this, I was chosen for a Toddman Fellowship to go off to Harvard for the Senior Executives and State and Local Government Program, and I spent almost a month in Cambridge and Boston at Harvard at the John F. Kennedy School of Government at Harvard. Well, it's a great program, and unfortunately, SMCOG no longer allows administrators to apply as elected officials only. So we scraped up a few dollars here and there, and I think we're going to see if she can make it this year and get in. We'd like to send Lacy Christiansen to that program this year, so I'll keep you posted on that. And then I want to close with a text I just got from my friend, Bill Leitner.
I want to say something about what you said earlier. When we go to these mayor's dinners, you and I have been to a lot of them, and the one thing, the common goal that they all say is, how'd you pull that off in your town from other communities? Because I know one of our responses is, because we know how to work together.
We like each other.
And our staff knows how to come together and promote our community as a whole. And I want to say thank you to all our staff members for helping us do a better job.
There's not, as a new person, there's not a lot of ego here, and I think that's a good thing. So you can see that in a lot of other communities, but I think that everyone here is really humble, and we're just really here for the community, so.
And before I leave, share two texts with you. This one I just got right now while I was standing over there, it's from Bill Leitner, who I've known for many years. He's a reporter for the Detroit Free Press, and a very good reporter. "Mr. City Manager, hello from your friend at the Detroit Free Press. On Sunday night, my friend and I had a fabulous dinner at Frame before watching a fascinating documentary as part of the Free Press Film Festival. Expensive, yes, but unforgettable. Had to tell you. Also, we saw many good-looking businesses along John R. Congrats on your success. Regards." Bill Leitner. And I think that text is kind of an example of the attitudes that we're seeing about the city of Hazel Park across this metropolitan region, so it's a team effort, it's all of us, it's you guys, it's the department heads. I'm pleased to be here, I serve it's a pleasure. And the next text I wanted to show you is the picture of the Korean beef tacos that's waiting for me.
It's so good.
At home when I leave here, so I thank you all for your patience, and I thank my amazing department heads as well.
Are you forgetting anything?
Thank you, everybody.
Are you forgetting anything?
The system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken.
Since this isn't a real, I thought that I covered that in my presentation, but as you can see, the system of municipal finance, Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken. Thank you all.
Adhere.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy.